What's in this container?
That we're on.
Planning Commission for the City of Wilsonville on Wednesday, January 9th, Act 2019 will come to order. Will our clerk please call the roll?
Chair Greenfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Postma.
Here.
Ron Heberlin.
Here.
Peter Hurley.
Here.
Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Phyllis Mellon.
Here.
Simon Springall.
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is a time when citizens have an opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing, and there is none tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand so that we may hear from you now. Seeing none, we'll move on to a consideration of our last month's meeting of December 12th of the Planning Commission. They've been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to be made? No motion to approve is required, therefore I will accept the minutes as distributed. We move on to our sole major item of the evening, which is a work session on the Town Center Redevelopment Plan. And presenting will be Ms. Bachel.
Thank you, Chair Greenfield, Commissioners. My name is Miranda Bate Shell, Planning Manager with the City of Wilsonville. And with me tonight, I have Kim Rybold, Associate Planner with the City, as well as Molly Cooney Mesker from MIG, the consulting firm that has been working with the city on this project for the past two and a half years. I am incredibly excited to be with you tonight and reach this major milestone in presenting to you a draft of the Town Center Plan in its whole as a document after these past two and a half years of work with this team, with this commission, and with this community. We have put this document together. You probably noticed that there are a few new maps and images. But for the most part, everything that's in front of you in that document is something that you all have seen before. I'm going to launch this presentation. Tonight, we're going to start and give a little bit of background and introduction for those at home that are watching, and just to kind of remind us how we got from two and a half years ago to tonight. I'm going to tell a little bit kind of of that backstory and share with you what we'll be sharing with the community over the next two months as we get to the hearing that's currently scheduled for March. Then Molly is going to walk you through the draft plan, at least the key highlights, high level. You'll have an opportunity to discuss the draft that's in front of you this evening. We'll have a discussion. You'll have an opportunity to ask the team any questions you have. And then we'll have a follow-on conversation that we started two months ago to go through a couple of the Development Code refinements and get final recommendations from you as a group. There wasn't quite certainty on some decisions on a couple issues, so we'll walk through those tonight with you and hopefully get a final recommendation to bring back during the adoption cycle. And then we'll share with you the timeline moving forward. So just a little bit of background, the Town Center Plan really focuses on the 100 acres, the approximate 100 acres that are within and surrounding Town Center Loop. The Town Center is a hub of commercial and civic activity for the city. The last time there was a plan set for specifically for the Wilsonville Town Center was in 1973. And then there was additional work done in 1984 that did a Town Center study, which led to actually a local improvement district that helped build the Town Center Loop. And then, as you know, the majority of the development occurred in this area in the 90s and then the early 2000s when we saw a lot of population growth. When that plan was first put into place in the early 70s, there were only 1,000 people who lived here. And the majority of the growth was happening in the Town Center when the city was growing from 8,000 to 15,000 in a pretty short period of time. So there was a lot of growth happening, which is why a lot of development occurred in the Town Center. And as you know, today, we have 25,000 people who live here, and we've seen significant growth. And after three decades, there's been a lot of initiative and recognition by the city that it's time to look at Town Center and set a new vision for it for the 21st century. In 2014, both the Urban Renewal Strategic Plan and the Tourism Development Strategy recommended that the city look at a new vision for Town Center and a plan for developing a Town Center in the future. And it was set as a city council goal for the 2015-2017 cycle. So staff moved forward with that initiative in 2015, applying for a grant. We received grant funds from Metro through a community planning and development grant process that we received in 2016 to start this project. We kicked this off in the fall of that year with the consultant team, which helped us to prepare, do some technical work, and prepare a pretty aggressive outreach plan that we then kicked off with the public in February of 2017, almost exactly two years ago. What we set forth in terms of goals for that project was really to set a community-driven vision for this area and to have the Town Center Plan and the future of Town Center meet the needs of the community and identify actions that would really foster both an attractive and accessible place for visitors and residents of all ages to shop, eat, live, work, learn, and play. And I'm excited to tell you that that is what we have put in front of you today. This plan has been fully shaped by the community. And it's important that we share that back with them. And that's what we're going to be doing after we present to you in the next couple of weeks. We're going to be going back out to the community to share with them their Town Center Plan. And we know the product we put in front of you today was a pretty big document that we know not everyone has time to read in depth. So I just want to share really briefly, before we jump into the document itself, what we'll be sharing with the community. We've put together an online version that people can scroll through pretty quickly to get a sense of what they've created and to understand what the key elements are in the plan and how those were shaped by the community itself. So I'm just going to scroll through some of this pretty quickly. We kind of just show that the plan was driven by community input. We show some of the key points of input that we received, how that influenced the key elements, the number of events that we participated in. I personally participated in dozens of meetings and talked to hundreds of residents in this community, so I'm pretty excited to be here and to share this with them. We talk a little bit about, you know, kind of how the vision that they put together. We highlight here what their vision and goals are for the future of Town Center. And this, obviously, I'm going a little bit faster than somebody at home would, but it's pretty quick and to the point to highlight that it really shaped the priorities for the future of Town Center, and that's what the foundation is, and that the recommendations really came from those community priorities. And then we walk through here kind of each of the key elements, a walkable and bike-friendly Town Center. We highlight some of the key surveys that we received. There was a lot of input for protected bike lanes, so that's partly where that cycle track idea came from. People want to be able to park once and walk around. That was very clear through the community input. We've tried to plug in some of the surveys and some of the idea center boards that we got input from through the library to show how that input really drove the plan. And obviously, fun images from some of the work that we did. We do present the maps so people can see what the content is in the plan. Another key aspect being the future Main Street and the support for that future Main Street and some of the key aspects on it. So I'm not going to walk through all of this. Honestly, you could go home and spend five to 10 minutes and hopefully have an idea of all the key aspects. And what's really important is at the end, I will scroll down to the end really quick and show you that those who do flip through this and think, "Oh, I do want to know more, and I do want to read the plan," they come here to the end, they can submit comments by going to our website, and they can go to the project website where the plan will be posted later this week. So there is an opportunity for folks to provide us more input as we head into the hearing process as well. So I just wanted to share that with you quickly because, as you know, through this project, we have done a tremendous amount of outreach. The community has really driven this project. We're grateful for all of the input that we've gotten. And we wanted to share back with the community and share with them how it was their input that really drove this process and drove this plan and drove the outcomes. And to circle back, input is really valuable, but people feel like they don't know what value they're providing if you don't come back to them and tell them what value they provided. And so we felt that it was really important to make sure that the plan document showed that and that we also had a really quickly, easily able-to-scan version for the public to look at and understand that as well. So I wanted to share that with you, and we will have that link sent out shortly. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Molly, and she's going to walk us through the plan document itself.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to take a moment, sort of echo some of what Miranda said, that, you know, here we are after two-plus years of a community-driven process. We have a draft Town Center Plan. And I want to thank you for all of your ideas and time and effort and you going, many of you above and beyond, to come out to many of these community events. It's been a joy working with you, and I know Alex, my colleague, who is typically here, you know, shares the same sentiment, so. So this is actually also a little bit of what Miranda just flipped through rapidly. But I just want to take a moment to remind us of where we came from over the last two and a half years and kind of how we got to where we are. In early 2017, we launched this planning process to update the 1973 Vision for Town Center. And throughout the process, we have worked with thousands of community members, stakeholders, landowners, business owners, through various activities and events, such as the block party that you see here. We heard from a variety of community members with a diversity of perspectives. But pretty early on in the process, there were some common threads and areas of agreement that were emerging. And from these, we developed these themes into a framework to guide the planning process and that will also guide implementation going forward. And these are the vision, the goals, the measures of success that you helped to craft and that you're all quite familiar with at this point. The goal of environmental stewardship, harmonious design, mixed uses, safe access and connectivity, community gathering places, economic prosperity. You'll see these goals echoed throughout the plan, throughout the recommendations, the projects, the policies. They really are the driving force behind the plan. And, you know, guided by this framework and the continued community input, we crafted recommended land uses and transportation system. And you see that sort of come to life here. And this was probably a new image for all of you in the planning document. And here you see the Town Center that was envisioned by the community, or, you know, a version of it. You see, we're looking, we're on Park Place, the intersection of Park Place and Courtside. You see the existing plaza that's there is sort of expanded and activated here. You see the proposed cycle track adjacent to Town Center Park. You see many of the elements desired by community members, such as outdoor seating, such as natural materials incorporated into building, activated ground floors with a lot of glass. You know, the texture and the landscape incorporated into the streetscape. Town Center is large. As Miranda mentioned, you know, it's 100 or so acres. And there was a need to look at it through, you know, both holistically but also in smaller pieces. And so, you know, in the very beginning, through community input and technical analysis, we identified these sort of sub-districts that leverage their location within the district and within Town Center and within Wilsonville and also, you know, to make sure that they're compatible with adjacent uses. So we see the kind of high activity in the commercial mixed use adjacent to I-5, kind of stepping down to the neighborhood mixed use to the east to make sure that there's compatibility between the existing neighborhoods. Here you see the proposed open space network. One of the things we heard from the community right off the bat was the desire for open spaces, gathering spaces, natural areas, and trails incorporated into Town Center. And if you'll remember, kind of in the very first iteration, there was this idea of an Emerald Chain. And you see this carried through throughout the planning process and in the final community concept and the final plan, that there's connectivity from the proposed pedestrian-bike bridge across I-5 down into Memorial Park through a series of trails, green interludes, plazas, the existing Town Center Park. The proposed street network, you see here a kind of series of streets. You see a more gridded, walkable street network and various streets that serve specific purposes. So Wilsonville Road, that is really, you know, to get people to and through Town Center. But then internally, some of the more local network and the proposed Main Street, the extension of Park Place, that's really about moving people, you know, within Town Center and allowing people to spend time on those streets, that those streets are really pedestrian-oriented and walkable, bikable. And then building on that, a multimodal network that overlays, you know, the pedestrian and bicycle connections, the trails, the bike paths that were really desired by community members that we heard over and over. These land uses and the transportation network build the framework, or are the framework, for development. But we start to think about, how does that development happen over time? What are the key elements? What are the key transitions? And that's what we're going to discuss a little bit here. So to get at some of these questions, we looked at the types of development that are feasible and the land that's actually available to see what's likely to develop where and when. So, you know, looking at the market analyses shows us what's likely to develop first due to the current market conditions, due to the land that's available, and what's likely to develop later after some of these initial investments and initial amenities are added into Town Center. And these are, you know, general numbers, but based on these analyses, what can generally be expected over time. This sort of incremental transformation is shown in the following slides. Here we see current conditions. What we see is our existing buildings, our existing street network. We see a fair amount of vacant land and parking lots, some underutilized parking lots. And in this next slide, we see the first phase over the next 10 years, how Town Center might be likely to develop. We see more amenities with the addition of the pedestrian-bicycle bridge over I-5. We see some more transit and bike pedestrian infrastructure. And we see some infill starting to happen. And the type of development that we see to be most likely in this next 10 years is rehab of existing buildings, infill on vacant land or underutilized parking. The parking that is most likely to occur in this first phase in the next 10 years is most likely to be surface or tuck-under parking. We see the addition of, or the extension of Park Place to develop the Main Street. You know, it's really sort of a catalyst project. And we see some local network development as some of the development comes in over near I-5, for example. Looking out 10 to 20 years, we see more amenities come in. We see more of those bicycle pedestrian, you know, likely more transit come in, which will attract a greater diversity of development. In this phase, we're likely to see office mixed use. Where in the last phase, the types of development that were most likely to occur was multifamily mixed use. So here we're seeing more diversity in the types of land uses and development. This is also the phase where we might be more likely to see structured parking come in. It becomes more feasible. The development analysis shows that this is the point where developers might be able to pencil that out. So looking out far into the future, 20 years and beyond, this is what Town Center looks like at full buildout. By this time, all types of development are likely feasible. And this is when we see some of the more intense uses, you know, more diverse, high-activity land uses that might be likely to be developed. The multimodal transportation network is complete. You know, and this is really an estimate of when these things would happen. It's not to say that, you know, if Kaiser, Frieser, some of the bigger landowners decided to develop earlier, it couldn't catalyze some of this earlier. But based on current land availability, this is sort of the timing and how we see it projecting out. Looking to the infrastructure systems that will support this new development, our analysis shows that the existing systems are adequate to meet demand. There were no red flags. We see, you know, across sewer, water, and stormwater that what Town Center has is, will meet both current and existing demand. And in the case of stormwater, actually, because there's so much impervious surface here now, that new development is actually expected to decrease that and create more pervious surface that will help us manage stormwater. Sewer was analyzed both by our MIG team and Murray Smith, the city's consultant. And sewer is expected to support both current and projected development, the same with water. So really what we see, the changes in infrastructure that will be needed are changes in location. So, you know, as new streets are built, as parking lots change, the lines will need to change location, and that will happen with development. But in terms of the load and the size, the system meets the needs. Implementation. So we know that, you know, change is not going to happen overnight. We've seen this sort of phased, you know, next year out through 20 years plus. And it's going to take a variety of strategies to help that development happen. And we've talked pretty extensively about some of these. We've talked pretty extensively about regulatory actions, infrastructure, economic development. So I'll go through those, but I want to also touch on some of these that we haven't talked about as much. So just start out with regulatory actions. You know, these will mostly be completed, not entirely, but mostly by city staff. The plan will amend the comprehensive plan and code, and changes to some of these other related plans will happen with their regular plan updates. For infrastructure investments, you know, some of these will be provided either wholly or partially through city, through public funding. And much of it will happen with private development. Some of the major projects that we know have been prioritized by the community, by you, by the task force, such as the pedestrian bridge and the park place, you know, those are really where the potential public and public-private partnerships may occur. Parking strategies. So this one, maybe we haven't talked quite as much about, but, you know, parking at this point in current Town Center is readily available and in some cases even oversupplied. So one of the ways to think about parking is, you know, how you use parking to encourage the type of development we want to see in Town Center. And some of those strategies include reductions for certain types of projects, development projects, or unbundling parking, you know, not having parking tied to a lease in a residential building, for example. That will help sort of right-size the parking. And as development occurs, other strategies will be needed. As the street network gets fleshed out and further developed and some of the parking lots, you know, shift, there will be a need to manage on-street parking. That's not a need now, but it will be a need in the future. If it develops as envisioned. And centralized structured parking, while we don't see that as a need now, you know, down the road and through the market analysis, it shows that there will be a point where there may be a need for that, and it may be feasible. Placemaking. So this is a really, you know, important strategy area, excuse me. And really speaks to some of the elements desired by the community. So how do we turn, how do we make Town Center a more vibrant, active place? And some of the placemaking strategies, especially the short-term ones, are really achievable and cheap. They're not heavy lifts. And some of these include things like restriping Park Place, like we did during the summer at the block party, restriping it throughout the summer to show, you know, what that Park Place, what that new Main Street can look like, helping people imagine that and activating that area. You know, lunchtime food trucks near Town Center Park, a parklet competition, some of these things to generate excitement. And just because it's not in the plan, we provide in the plan a variety of suggestions and approaches, but placemaking strategies are really an opportunity for community-driven ideas, sort of an ongoing basis, and business owner-driven ideas. And so, you know, it will be important to continue to receive those ideas and encourage that activation. Economic development strategies, and this is another, I think we've touched on quite a bit throughout the process. But really partnerships between businesses and between businesses and the city will be really essential in the economic development of Town Center. The Chamber will play an important role. They are citywide, and we see a need for, you know, some more specific, Town Center-specific initiatives and kind of focus to really start to develop Town Center more. And some of these, you know, some of these programs include things like business retention and local assistance. You know, some of them will be kind of driven by the city, where others will be driven by an organization, such as the Chamber or a new business organization. Transit investments. So Wilsonville is lucky to have a very kind of proactive, active, and collaborative transit agency with Smart. And Smart recently updated its plan in 2017. That plan is very aligned with the vision of the Town Center Plan. They're excited to increase their service. And one of the things we heard from the community throughout is there is a desire for increased service. So the city, you know, the Smart will work on implementing their plan, and the city can support that through various ways, and new development will support that. But, you know, the connections, the bike-ped connections, some of the pedestrian amenities can really help support Smart's efforts and that increased service that the community wants. So I sped through that. I want to make sure we have time for discussion, some of the specific questions that Miranda called out earlier. But before we get to the kind of Development Code questions, I'd like to open up for questions about the plan more generally.
Who wants to go first? Don't all speak at once.
So this is such a huge undertaking, and I'm kind of overwhelmed with, in a good way. And yet, you know, frankly, I haven't had an opportunity to go into the details and work out, you know, any sort of major issues with it. In fact, it all looks great, and I am, I'm very interested to see the progression that you showed for the phasing. I'm just kind of interested in digging into the details of that and what those buildings may be, what kind of development we're going to have in the various phasing, and understanding, you know, when are we seeing new commercial versus new retail versus new mixed-use housing? And/or other kinds of developments. So I haven't found that other than diagrammatically. Maybe it's here, but I haven't found it in the plan.
There is a relationship on those plan-view kind of development scenarios with the table that we showed in the presentation, and I'm going to try to find real quick. I think it precedes it just by a few pages. Yeah, what page is that? So it's page 31 of the plan, but it looks like it's page 36 of 107 in your packet. So there is, it's Table 3.1. It talks about the potential future development by land use type and Town Center. And that is connected to those plan-view diagrams. As you know, we don't know exactly when any given property will want to develop and what exactly will go on that site. But what we did do is we did look at land availability now and the types of development that were more feasible in the Development Feasibility Report that we did. And we projected those building types in those places first. And then we also looked back at the market analysis, which showed that office isn't as strong right now. But we do expect office as the place starts to develop and we start to see some of the mixed-use development for office to come online at that point in time. So we merged those together as we were looking at the different So we merged those together as we were looking at the different sites to place different development types on those properties. It's, you know, it's scenario planning. So there, there's also the opportunity that the property owner of that site sells it five, 10 years earlier or later, or they put a different building type on it. It's the best we can do in terms of matching up the market, the development analysis, and then what is on the property today and what we think the likelihood of it shifting and when is. So it's, it's one version of the analysis, but it's the sort of best, best guess that you can make in that situation, is what we tried to put together. So there is a relationship between that table and the plan views.
Okay.
I've got some of you.
Okay, go ahead, please.
First of all, I mean, I've been banging this drum for seven years, and so I do want to commend you guys on this, is that I've, I've always been a big advocate of make this accessible for the layperson to kind of read it and understand it, kind of that story type of approach. You guys did an excellent job of that. First, I wanted to let you know, it looks great. It's, you know, transparency in government means you need to make it accessible for people to kind of get through it, and it does a great job of that. Secondly, I, I'm, I'm a terrible person at visualizing these things and, you know, these, these little maps really help me a lot. And I think, you know, Miranda in particular, we've been telling you over and over again, it's kind of hard to visualize what it's going to look like in the future. And so these little implementation maps are, are huge for me, so great, thanks for doing that. But can you do me a favor and go to the one that's, it's the beyond, because it's the most dense, maybe go to the one that's beyond 20 years.
Yeah.
And caveat, obviously, I understand this is just conceptual, but I think there's a couple of things on the map that I want to point out, that I just want to make sure that we're sensitive to. The first one, since it's kind of easy, is this, Town Center Park where the Korean War Memorial is. It's kind of, you know, it's kind of tough to know where that is, and I know it's something that's really critically important for people in this community. And I don't like, know, obviously, these buildings that are there where the, near where the War Memorial is, are probably never going to happen and who knows what they are. But if we can just do something to just make clear that we're kind of not encroaching on that and getting too close to something that, you know, matters to people like that, I think that would be useful. I just don't want people coming away, you know, a little panicked of, oh, what's going to happen to that memorial? Secondly is that I noticed that we have a little green belt that comes up in the upper left-hand quadrant that's supposed to be a green belt. And I guess what I'm seeing there behind the movie theater, right just south of the movie theater, is, it seems to be like a walkway type of, and maybe we can call that out a little, because I looked at this for a little bit and I kind of looked at it and said, wait a minute, where's that little green belt going to be? And I guess I understand what's happening, but it wasn't immediately, I had to kind of think about it a little bit.
The promenade?
Yeah, so maybe if it were just a little more prominent, that it is kind of an open space promenade kind of thing. I actually like the idea of the kind of promenade thing, especially considering we're intending this as kind of a, from pedestrian bridge, kind of a crooked little line over to the Town Center Park. I like that idea, but it just kind of gets lost in there. It's just something I'm pointing out. I don't, it's, it's conceptual, but I know when people like me see it, they're kind of like, okay, I can kind of see, but wait a minute, where's this thing?
Yeah, great, thank you.
I think that might be useful. And then, I don't know that we need to look at the maps of it, but I, I guess I was a little bit, I understand when it comes to the infrastructure, particularly though the, the sewer, the water, and particularly the stormwater, that we've kind of got what we need over there, but especially when I look at that stormwater one, man, it seems like a lot of lines going in the ground all of a sudden. And it kind of looks a little bit terrifying and, you know, between yourselves, I guess I'm looking at yourselves and thankfully I see Ben Altman here too, might be able to give a different perspective on that. I mean, it, it almost, when I see it, it almost looks a little bit cost prohibitive of sorts. I mean, I understand it doesn't have a capacity problem, but it seems like a lot of pipes in the ground. Do we envision that that's going to be an issue or something that's going to scare people away?
Do you want to take this? Or do you want me to take this? We haven't done the cost estimates for the private side of the development in terms of the lines they'd be putting in. As you see, the majority of these are on like those local roads, so it's really about getting the connections back to the, to the mains.
Yeah.
And that is a recommended action item from this Town Center plan, is to actually do that analysis and look at whether or not that will be prohibitive or not.
Okay.
The, one of my understanding that is that this is consistent with our, basically with our existing policies around infrastructure development. So having to do the onsite quality and the onsite managing of flow, but that there's also a requirement to put those pipes into the mains. So we went ahead and put kind of the, I guess, I don't want to call it the worst-case scenario, but if everyone had to do that based on what our code calls for, what would it look like? And then what will that cost? And then we can look at that. And so at this point, we've looked at what are public costs or likely to be public costs, which are fairly minimal on terms of the, the pipes. But the, one of the recommendations, recommendations we do have in the economic development section is actually to look at the infrastructure and to see on the private side, is that going to be cost prohibitive or not? And then what type of funding strategies would we want to look at in order to address that if it is?
Okay, that, that helps. At least, I'm, I'm just a little bit worried, but I, I look at those maps as a potential developer and go, ooh.
Yeah.
Right? And I, I guess I don't want to do, I mean, I guess we maybe need to do that, but I also sensitive to what it looks like and what it might be, what it might portend for the future if you want to undo the investment here. And then the last question I've got for you is, is when we were talking about the economic development strategies and there was discussion about local business improvement district, the LIDs, and, you know, evaluation of tax incentive for mixed-use buildings, is there something like that available for us potentially or not?
Yeah, so all of those are programs that are allowed to be put in place at the local level in the state of Oregon. The, the mixed-use tax incentive is known as the Vertical Housing Development Zone. It's a state-enabled program, but all the authority is with the local government. It's pretty straightforward. It's been used in a number of other cities in the Portland region and is one that we can explore and look at as an opportunity, particularly if we wanted to focus on like the Main Street. Is on this Main Street, do we want to put that in place for a certain timeframe to get a few projects in the door? And then it's something that you don't have to keep it long-term or forever, and it's only a partial tax payment. So we would want to do, the recommendation is to do some analysis to look at whether or not that's, it, when we did it in the development feasibility analysis, we showed that that tool was enough to make projects flow.
Okay.
But we might want to just look at what would the potential abatement be? How long would we want to maybe do it for if we did it for it? What's, how much of an area, do we do it for a length of years or a length of projects?
Yeah.
Those are the questions we would need to ask as follow-on. And then the local improvement district and business improvement district are both tools that are also used within the Portland region and within the state. And those are set up at, at varying levels. It's often not by the local government, but it can be in partnership with the local government. A lot of times those are kind of self-imposed by a, a business district who wants to, you know, all kind of pony in a certain amount of money and then they get this unified benefit out of it. Or for the local improvement district, that's specifically tied to infrastructure. And so all the property owners within that area essentially self-impose a fee upon themselves in order to pay for that infrastructure.
So the, the plan is dense enough that I kind of went through it real quickly. I mean, do we speak to that on the plan? I don't remember if I saw that.
Yeah. We describe each of those tools.
So are at least giving everybody an indication of, we don't know the answers yet, but these sorts of tools are available and potentially, okay.
I just want to follow up quickly to the promenade suggestion on the map, which is a good one. I like that to call it out a little bit more. But also on page 66 of the plan and 71 of your packets, there's a promenade cross-section, which illustrates, illustrates potentially what that promenade could look like in cross-section view, which gives you kind of a better idea. You know, it really brings it to life a little bit more.
Yeah, and I think I saw that, but I, you know how it is, your eyes kind of draw to those quick and easy maps and it kind of disappears.
I really appreciate that suggestion too. I just wanted to call it out.
I want to follow up on Commissioner Postman's questions on stormwater. It looked to me like a lot of the stormwater that is being proposed as infrastructure is associated with the new street network.
Yes.
Are you, and I was looking in the table of who's going to be primarily responsible for which part of the strategies. And stormwater, or even the streets, aren't bumped out specifically, whether it's private or city, it's, looks like it's partnership. So the question that that raised in my mind is, do typically if, if a big area gets redeveloped and the developer runs streets in it, are those done by the developer and then dedicated to the city, or does the city do that?
So typically, it's the, the former. Typically, the developer builds the infrastructure. However, I'm not sure that we've done that 100% of the time in every case.
Well, and that's why, you know, that differentiation in my mind was a kind of germane to, to what Commissioner Postman was saying, because typically that is done because that infrastructure is really a small piece of the overall development bill that the developer is looking at.
Right.
Although if you are borderline, then that could kind of tip you one way or another.
Right.
But in that map, you're taking out a big stormwater pipe that basically goes diagonally through the Town Center. And in its place, you're putting all these streets and stormwater associated with the streets redirecting the runoff to the southeast corner of the Town Center where it goes into the, the stream in the park, Memorial Park, Marazzi Park, whatever it is. Is that, is that called Memorial Park?
Memorial Park.
Memorial.
So it makes sense to me as an engineer and, and for planning, cost-wise, it could affect the phasing of the development of some of these sites.
Well, and I think, and you might be able to answer this too. I think my, one of my concerns with it was, is that, you're right, I mean, the, the new sewer lines kind of go with the roads, but the development may not necessarily, you know, some of the development may precede the roads and you end up with this weird situation where maybe you've got to phase it according to gravity, right? And, and I didn't want to find ourselves in that weird situation of what do we do? And, and that's why I appreciate your comments, because I, I don't know how that, you know, I'm an attorney, I don't know how that stuff works. I mean, is that really going to be a problem or?
It flows downhill.
You know, it always does. Well, that's actually applicable in law too. So, but, you know, I guess I'm trying to figure out, you know, all of the, it seems like a big network and it seems like it's based upon roads, but maybe you don't want to develop based upon how the roads, or, or gravity says it needs to go that way, but you're building the road that way. I guess I don't, I can't envision how all that works and it just worries me a little bit.
Well, it is, it is the same approach that, that you see, we discuss on occasion about the transportation network.
Yeah.
It could be that the city at some point may have to step in and say, this upstream area is getting developed and they're doing the street network. And in order to connect it to this big existing pipe, we need to have a connector here that we, we do until development downstream fills that in. But typically, so long as you have connectivity in existing flows that are accommodated and the, the analysis here shows, by the way, I appreciate the, the details of the assumptions on the infrastructure. I know, maybe nobody else here cares, I went through it.
Great.
Because the assumptions make a big difference. And I did, wanted to make sure that we're not making kind of wishful thinking assumptions about what is happening. What Miranda is saying is that we're looking at worst-case scenario is exactly how we should be doing it because of the uncertainty involved. If you're just too positive about how nicely things are going to go, it's probably going to get flooded. So that's the answer that I have.
But what do you do in those situations where this map shows that you need gravity one direction, but there's a building that is not going away for a while between you and, in the direction you need your new stormwater lines to go?
Well, that's when the city does the zigzag around that existing building.
Yeah.
With future roads in mind, so when the road is built, then it's in, in there. And that funding can get then paid by the downstream development as that happens.
Later on.
So it's done for you, but you pay for it later, is, is what you're doing typically. And in the, in the detailed analysis, they were addressing the fact that all of this is going to be dependent on what the elevation of the inverts of the pipes are. The capacity is there, it just needs to go downhill and the engineers are going to make sure it's going down.
Okay, okay, so it's not as bad as I'm thinking, is what you're telling me.
Well, they're not going to let it get that bad, let me put it that way.
All right.
Or the Public Works Department is going to have explaining to do for us.
Okay, that's good to know.
I'll go. One of the things that really attracted me to this plan early on was the Emerald Chain idea. I, I love that. I thought that was really important. It kind of exemplified what everybody wanted in terms of an open space and, and connection to nature and in the environment. And I was just kind of wondering, this prop, and Commissioner Postman talked about the, the promenade and, and how in that map, it sort of got, it kind of gets lost. And I, I just am thinking, this is just sort of my idea, is that with that pedestrian-bike overpass is like, to me, could be a real catalyst to, to communicating this in a real tangible way to people. If that process, that project could be, I don't know, moved, it kind of starts to exemplify what we're trying to accomplish here. So that's just sort of my, my thought on it, that, you know, even in the 10, for the zero to 10 years, I don't, I don't see that being at a higher place of, of happening. And I just think, to me, that does say what we're trying to do. It's a way of communicating that connection, nature, moving people through this, and it just starts to get that message across. So I'm, I'm just kind of advocating for maybe looking at that happening sooner, I guess is sort of where I'm going with that and.
The promenade or the gateway project at the Bridge Landing, or both?
Kind of both, yeah, because they kind of, they kind of blend together to me. And it's, it seems to me if I had that, that, and I come over the, over the, the bike path and then I go through this promenade, and then, oh, it's, to me, then the natural extension is then there's going to be a place then to, to exist, you know, and to walk after that. So that's just kind of, kind of the way I think about it. And something that would lead me to want to walk there. I guess that's what I'm, I'm thinking, what's going to want, make me want to walk there? And having those two elements brings me to that area of the city in a, in a, in a non-car, non-car manner, so.
Can I just interject there? Because that really made, reminded me of something. There's not a lot of accessible bike parking right now in Town Center. And yet, you know, one thing that would be great is to be able to ride your bike from some neighborhood in the city, whether it's going across that new bridge or, or, or somewhere from the existing east side of the city. And, and park, you know, lock your bike up in Town Center, around the edge of somewhere in Town Center Park or somewhere like that, and then being able to, you know, visit the retail.
Yeah, because, yeah, when you bike now, it's scary. I mean, there's, there's not an easy access into this area. You have to cross such major highways and, and, yeah, downright, I've done it only a few times because I'm not a great cyclist and I'm not comfortable doing it and I certainly wouldn't bring my grandkids to do it. So, and that's kind of the image that we want, we want. Did you have something else?
No, I'm looking, I'm looking at Jerry, actually.
Bicycle parking is fortunately one of the less daunting needs. It's something which can be done with a minimum of infrastructure and a minimum of expense, frankly. It does require some cooperation, but, and a general will to provide it, but it's, we're talking here thousands and not millions.
I had a couple more. Okay. One was, you were talking about create a programming plan to activate year-round events and things. And I was just kind of wondering, how do you see that dovetailing with the new kind of the arts and cultural group that's, right edits kind of inception right now too? How do you see those two things, you know, do you see them, you know, like offshoots of each other or working collaboratively? Have you given that some thought?
It's a great question. At this point, it's, we haven't quite formalized who would be the lead on that. And I think in the chart, I think we actually have multiple names listed. And I think in the chart, I think we actually have a multiple names listed in that, in that line item and in the table at the end for the implementation matrix. And I think it's because there's already a number of entities that already do a lot of programming. And my, I think that that would be a group, if it's continuing, would be a great group to coordinate with. I think that parks actually is probably kind of our first stop on that. They already do a tremendous amount of programming in the town center and so they would be a huge party at the table. There's also, I think what's outlined in that implementation item is that a lot of downtown business groups or business associations often take the lead on a programming plan, especially if they have a business improvement district set up where they're all contributing. And then there are events throughout the year that help to promote that area. So that, there are a lot of opportunities for partnerships and I think my first place from a city standpoint would be with parks. But I think there's a number of groups throughout the city we'd want to involve who are already doing things in town center and hosting events. I don't know what you want, if you want to add anything.
I was going to mention the, you know, business district.
Yeah.
Potential role.
And then there, in the opportunity zones and opportunity funds, you talk about preparing a point person or agency to connect investors, local needs and kind. And I don't know, I mean, it's not something that I'm aware of, but is there any possibility of funding from that, of grants to make that happen?
That's a great question. This is actually almost taught off the presses. It came to us, this is something that came through a recent federal level kind of bill that provides some potential funds that I know that I've just seen articles about coming out for the city of Portland and Willsmore happens to be in an opportunity zone. I know our economic development manager, Jordan Vance, went to a meeting today that was talking about that and he's still in the room, so he may have more information to share about that, to provide more information here. But I, I know it's something that we want to be watching and tracking and that there might be funds available to be invested in this area for projects. And it's something that Mr. Vance would be working on with us to help promote, potentially get funding for, or make the right connections to bring projects to this area.
Right. Well, the whole idea, I think, and we keep hearing it, is is to get that catalyst for those businesses to want to do this and it, that almost takes someone working that, you know, actively working that.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I know we've heard that before, but yeah. And I just, I saw that and I kind of clicked that maybe there's an opportunity there.
Yeah. And that's why one of the prioritized action items too is the building public-private partnerships is how can we, through our economic development, find property owners and potential developers and maybe some of these opportunity zone funds to bring those connections together and work on projects together.
Thank you.
Couple of ideas.
Yeah.
This business of the promenade that came up, the ideas are really interesting. One of the challenges that I think the city is going to have is because this is a long-range vision and plan, that we need to maintain enthusiasm for it and we need to keep the vision alive. The Emerald Chain, if that could be a short-term project, to the extent that it's not going through somebody's building, that could be a walking path on a map that says, this is where it's going to be, some of it is in place and you could have informational placards every 300 yards or so that shows visually what kind of vision the city has for the profile in that area or plazas and activities. So people, and especially after Mr. Chairman's bike racks are in place, can bike their park or bike through and walk and keep this kind of idea alive and and look forward to it and and kind of ask about it or inform themselves about it. On the same kind of line of thinking, I don't know if a 3D fly-through video is one of the things of the promenade, the entire chain of green is part of something you were thinking of or even in your kind of outline of what the project could. I don't want to add any, any new thing to your project, but that would be really nifty if based on, you know, handy 3D design, visual kinds of things, you could do a fly-through of what that promenade would look like with all the massing and kind of space windows looking out and vistas and so forth as a, an ultimate vision. So that those who look at a two-dimensional map and see density are able to see then this kind of a dance of spatial articulation as you walk through the fully developed town center.
That's really great. At this point, I know MIG would have to do it pro bono, which I'm sure they're not interested in.
Charlie did everything that wasn't in somebody's job.
There's actually a program at Clackamas County. They have a Main Street program. They actually have grants to do this type of 3D flyover projects. It's normally for kind of like a block or for if a project happened on a site, but they might actually be open to this idea. This is only, you know, I think the promenade stretches a few blocks. That might be something that we could look into. I know they have grants for that.
The promenade itself, you mean just the, the street piece of it? I was thinking the whole chain of.
Oh, the whole entire chain? We might be able to convince them.
End up in the park.
I'll try.
From the park and all the way.
We could just apply for like three different grants.
Make it live, you know?
And I think, I just want to add on to that because that's sort of where my head was at, you know, like if that was there, then I can see this happening. And also I might be interested in investing if I was, you know, going through there. And and, you know, it's sort of like, you gotta, this plan was hard for me to get my head wrapped around and people got excited about it. But if, but if it's 20 years, there's not going to be a lot of enthusiasm. Even 10 years is a long time in people's memories and excitement. So anything that we can do to start, and I love that idea of like placards along this, this walkway or bikeway, whichever it ends up, kind of it'll be both, I'm sure, kind of envisioning what it could be. And it reinforces what all this work is and that what the people wanted and that, yeah, see, this is, here we could have this. And then, you know, you just don't know when someone might be walking by, Bill Gates or, you know, I mean, you know, somebody with a lot of money says, yeah, boy, I could see myself building a, you know, a town, you know, a row of townhouses here. I'd love to have that. That'd be cool, you know? You just don't know when that would spur that kind of interest. So, yeah.
Yeah.
We're just kind of thinking on the same lines of.
That's great. Those are great suggestions.
Keeping that picture in people's brains because it gets, it can get lost real easily with all the other things that go on.
Yeah.
All right. Jumped in. Okay, so infrastructure investments. So the priority slash project, you know, from number one through 12 for the infrastructure projects with the bike ped being number one. Is there, is there going to be the infrastructure on the west side of the bike ped bridge to be able to have that be a useful thing if that happens within the next zero to 10 years? Because right now and where the alignment is, there's not a whole lot of bicycle facilities in the area where that landing would be. And so does the city plan on as part of that, putting the bike facilities in there that would be necessary to support it?
On the west side of I-5?
Yes.
So the project is waiting for this project to be done in order to begin design work for the bike pedestrian bridge. It'll be looking at design for both the west side landing as well as the east side landing and the bridge itself, obviously. And that would be looking at the connect, the landing on the west side and how that connection would connect to existing infrastructure. I'm not sure if it will look at bike lanes all the way to Smart Central or not, or if that it will be just taking it to Barber Street. Do you know if, do you know the answer to that?
I thought Barber had bike lanes. Excuse me.
So I think if Barber has bike facilities, then it would be connecting. I'm pretty sure that the project, the Bridge Landing is looking at connecting to Barber. So it'd be connecting to the facilities that are on Barber. So it'd be looking at the connections on both sides.
So then it would be putting in the facilities on Boone's Ferry to get to Barber.
That's my understanding.
To then access the existing.
That is my understanding.
That connection would definitely be needed as part of the bridge, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I have this fear of a bridge to nowhere, both for this one and for the Boone's Ferry one. And so I just want to make sure that that's there.
Yeah.
The, on the east side, in the town center side, my concern is there as well. You know, I think the following two, three and four and that Park Place development, you know, to me is that, that primary thing that needs to be done. If the bridge and that is happening and then you have no real connection between those two from a bike pedestrian standpoint, how useful is that bridge going to be? Your, your Bike Ped Project 11 and your promenade would be the natural connection to get you from the, the, the bridge over to Park Place, but if that's not going to go in for another 10 years, what's, what's the plan? What's the thought behind that?
So one thing we could look at is the Town Center Loop West modifications and looking at how we add additional bike facilities to Town Center Loop West in the interim or create some other type of interim connection that maybe isn't a full build out of the promenade that we could do in that timeframe. So people aren't just kind of dumped with, out a safe access point to get into the rest of town center. The list is, so I think one of the concerns here is that the promenade is listed all the way down at number 12 is that. So these aren't necessarily exactly listed in order of how they would all get phased. So it's not necessarily to say that the promenade would be the 12th thing to happen on this list of 14. They're, they're more kind of clustered together because even like the infrastructure project 14, that's water, sewer and stormwater, those would happen as the other developments occur and as those other road projects would occur. I think one thing that we'd like to do that we've often done is try to look at how those can be integrated with the private development. And so I think with the promenade, what I'm hearing tonight is that there might be more of an interest in having that be a higher priority and maybe that's more publicly led versus just waiting for development in that area to occur if development in that area is not happening for soon enough, essentially.
Yeah, I think for me, you know, some of it comes down to that chicken and the egg.
Yeah.
You know, you're waiting for it to be there, but if it's not there, then it doesn't happen either.
Right.
And so, you know, making sure that you do have those connections to encourage people to, to come to the area and, you know, go from the Bike Ped Bridge to Town Center Park to the central area. You know, if you're going to have to go down Town Center Loop West onto a, down, you know, to an area where there's an existing connection, it's not as conducive to somebody going and doing that on a regular basis.
Right. So one thing we were already looking at, you'll know in this draft, we had a TBD in the estimated cost for that item and part of that was because the initial thought was it might be led by development and built as part of development to make sure that, because a lot of times we do that to make sure that open spaces or the plaza, in this case, a promenade, is very embedded and well-designed with the surrounding development and land use. And then we can have the developer help to build that facility and it happens all at once. But we already looked into, we've already connected and we've been doing an at-cost estimate to see what if we did build that as part of our park system and have an estimate that we can, if we want to put it into our park system and collect SDCs in order to build that, that we have that avenue and opportunity. So we will get a cost estimate for that. And I think the conversation I'm hearing tonight is that having, that the, that the city might very well be interested in doing that depending on how we see the development pattern building out in town center in the next 10 years.
Yeah. That's good. Thank you.
So we can, we'll definitely add that language.
It's been a concern of mine from the very beginning, how we get from here to there in the plan. That is, I've been crucially aware of the problem presented by the very fact that town center is built. We have, there's a lot there, much of it not very usable, but it's there. And I've been a little slow, I guess, in working out my personal vision of how we get from here to there. And for the first time with this report, I'm, I can see something. I can see it happening and I'm encouraged by that, very encouraged by that, actually. My questions, I've been anticipated by, other comments have been made already, but I want to follow up on points that Commissioner Mellon has raised about the need for, as mentioned on page, what is it? Page 96 of 107, the need for a point person or agency. I, I think to this, to where we are right now, the Planning Division, Planning Office has been providing that point agency and the point person probably has been our own very capable Ms. Bejel. But is there a plan being developed in the, in the city staff to identify someone with more focused responsibility on the coordination of planning and resources for the town center development? Someone who can provide, as the description says here, play a coordinating and support role to connect investors and local needs. Are we moving in that? Have we got something going in that direction beyond the already overburdened staff in the planning office? It seems to me that some, someone has to take the ball here, take the vision that's been developed and with, with such broad input, diffused input from the community and can provide the, actually the implementation or the, the, the moves toward implementation to make it happen. Someone with the, with a finger on all of the potential resources and with a foot in the business community to not just let inspiration happen, but to cause it to happen in the business community. Because I, I think if the inspiration is not there in the business community, it simply won't happen. The city can't make it happen and wishing and planning and daydreaming about it on the part of the public isn't going to make it happen. We've got to excite some investors to come in and actually get, get the ball rolling. Where, where is, where are we doing, what are we doing in that direction in terms of personal and agency support?
So at this point, it isn't something that we're necessarily actively working on because it's an implementation action that's coming out of the plan. The way that it's envisioned particularly is it's an economic development strategy. It's something that we would be looking at a partnership between our economic development manager and the Planning Division, really working together on how we implement some of these actions. But that's also dependent upon the direction that we get through this adoption process and what are priorities for the city and the city staff to be working on and what goals get set in terms of the work that we should be doing. So that's something that we would be really looking for through this process is, is that direction, that that's an area of focus for the Community Development Department to be working on as part of its work program.
Excuse me, what, I can ask my colleague on this more directly. What, what input are we getting or what interaction are we getting with the? What, what input are we getting, or what interaction are we getting with the Chamber on this? Obviously, one of, one of the suggestions, which is made a couple of places here, is that an agency, which could be the Chamber. Where's the Chamber, where is the Chamber in our planning?
So the Chamber has participated throughout the planning process. They have been, we have representatives of the Chamber on the task force, and they've participated through the task force, and we've hosted a number of events together, as you know, targeting the business community. And we've met several times, kind of offline together on these different recommendations. So as these economic development strategies were coming together, staff met with Mr. O'Malley over at the Chamber to work with him, and I know that he took this information back to their board and shared it with them and talked to them about the different strategies and which ones they feel are essential and important. And so at this point, that is, they are called out as a partner that we will be collaborating with on these things. It's really a question of when we look at, okay, how do those formulate? Is, would the Chamber be the one to necessarily have the organizational structure for a Town Center Business Coalition, or is that something that's led by Town Center Businesses? And that's at this point unknown, because as it's been an idea that's been percolated and something that some of the Town Center Businesses have said, we feel like there's a benefit to us being able to really coalesce and work together on some of these things. There's already an existing structure through the Chamber, and so there's more dialogue that needs to occur with those different parties to really determine what the best structure for it is. But the, that's why it's written that we'll be coordinating with the Chamber, but that, and then the question is, they may or may not be the lead on it. So they'll be participating, it's just the question of how, what is the structure?
Is a structure emerging in the town, among the Town Center Businesses?
Not yet. I, we, in the focus groups that we had with a lot of the Town Center Businesses, there was a lot of excitement about this idea, but there hasn't been anyone necessarily who's jumped out and taken the lead or necessarily, we've had small groups of businesses that have come together at different kind of points in the project to talk to us about their questions and concerns. But I wouldn't say that there's necessarily a couple point people or a group that's consistently said, yes, we want to be charged with setting this up, or we're actively working to set this thing up at this point in time. It's been more established as a need than necessarily people self-identifying or appointing to, to take that action yet.
I can tell you, I can report, I mean, the Chamber is very engaged in it. I mean, they've worked with Ms. Bejel quite frequently, Mr. Vance in the back of the room, hello back there. You know, there's been plenty of conversation to the point that it is, it is a topic of conversation at each monthly board meeting, as it happens right now. Participation in the task force, various members and board members who are on the task force, and somebody sitting here at this dais. So, although, that, that board member just termed out last month, so never, never mind, scratch that. So the Chamber's very involved, and it's, and it's tough to understand how, you know, you, you got to start with a plan, right? And, and, you know, the, the Chamber has the same problem that the city does, and that is, how do you pay for somebody to do this point person kind of project, right? It's, it's tough to do. I mean, and I think, I think it's probably going to be a combination of city, Chamber, and some business people in this particular area kind of coming together, and, and it's, and it's a multi-tiered kind of task, is my guess. But it's, I don't know how we start that, if we're, we still don't have a plan in place. So, so we're getting close.
The need, excuse me, the need is described for a Transportation Management Association at some point. How far into this planning would we go before that might materialize?
I, do you want to say something?
Yeah. So that is something that would come, you know, as, as there are more businesses, commercial development, more local streets, more of a need, as parking becomes more parked up, and there's a need to manage that parking. So, you know, it could, it depends on development, but probably to the end of the 10 years into that next phase, I would say. I mean, it could be soon, it, it depends on development, but probably not this year or next, but, you know, looking out more in that five to 10 year, at least. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it really depends on the, the, you know, how, how parking is kind of flowing out and what the demand is.
I think one of the things we recommend is doing the Town Center Parking Management Plan probably around the 10-year timeframe, between five and 10 years, depending on the speed of redevelopment. And that will help us to better understand when the TMA or the Transportation Management Organization would be, would come into play. It could be a ways down the road, or it could be something that if the businesses, you know, are working together and there might, or if there's areas where they really want to be proactive about it, it could be something that they're interested in, in implementing earlier.
Yeah, I will, I'll add to that. The TMAs in some communities provide, you know, help with transportation options, so help with bike shares or help with, you know, you, you have Smart, but in other communities, shuttle services, or even subsidizing lifts or that sort of thing. So TMAs can, they have many tools at their disposal, disposal, and they take kind of many roles and use many strategies. So it does, it depends on what the needs end up being and what the interests of the businesses end up being. Yeah.
There were some code questions we wanted to address tonight.
Yes.
Before we get to that, can I add a question? Is the Main Street program a good kind of example to emulate for this, not just as a two-block Main Street, but as a Main Street district? So that it is a public-private kind of partnership under the auspices of the city, but it's a redevelopment coordinator for the, the Town Center District and deals with all of these coordinating issues and fundraising even and so forth. Is there a parallel between what we're trying to do here and, and the Main Street program that has been successful throughout the country?
Yes, I think so. It's one of the recommendations from the Economic Development Strategy is to look into, Oregon has a Main Street program, and to look into whether or not that is an appropriate kind of designation to go after and whether or not that program can provide additional support and direction that could move some of this forward.
But aside from the mighty and, and, you know, all of that, just for the city to, to use that structure.
As a guide.
Organizational structure.
It's a good idea.
For how to deal with coordination in this area. It's much bigger than a typical Main Street. But I know that large Main Streets as districts have, have kind of used that model successfully too.
You indicate that the funds will be available for that Main Street program in the spring this year. Is the city planning to make an application?
Are you referring back to the 3D modeling?
To the Oregon Main Street Network. You have a footnote on page 85. The funds will be available beginning in this, oh, that is.
Yeah, I see that now. On page, yeah.
Spring of 2019.
Page 90 of 107. Yeah, so we, that feels a little bit soon, since we're just adopting this plan this spring, but.
The program been announced?
It's something that we can, we can look into a little bit more and better understand the application timeframe for that and whether or not it's appropriate, and whether or not, if there's interest from the Planning Commission and the City Council for us to at least look into it and bring back the information to see if it's too soon or whether you want more time, we can do that.
Before we leave this part of our subject, I'd like to reiterate my feeling that we ought to be giving full priority, high priority, to the, both to the Emerald Chain as very visible manifestation of our overall long, long, you know, high-level plan, and to the development of our Main Street, which, which should really be the, the placemaker for this whole development. We've talked about it, we've, we've visualized it to a large extent, and it's pretty exciting. We haven't talked about it so much tonight, but I really think that those two, the Emerald Chain all the way from the Bike Ped Bridge over to Memorial Park and the development of that, what a few blocks, maybe two, three-block heart of Main Street, those will be very important to selling this in the long, both in the long range, because when it's there and people don't have to imagine it, they actually can see what, what we have in mind. And in the short term, it ought to be, particularly this Main Street development ought to be where we can get the most interest, I should think, in development. It's not, not huge development, a smaller, smaller-scale development. If some huge developer wants to come in, that would be wonderful, but in the, in the short term, having that perfect three or four, two or three-block heart that really expresses what we have in mind for the whole area, I think that's very important to get that going with as much city support as we can muster.
Yeah, anything else on the plan? No? Okay. I just, oh, did you have something on the plan?
Since we have citizens, it might be nice to take some testimony on the plan before you move.
Yeah, I was.
That would be at the, the.
We can do that.
Commission's discretion, of course.
Sure, we can do that.
Yeah, I was actually going to recognize that we have a few audience members, Ms. Myers, Mr. Altman, and Mr. Spence, who all participated on the project's task force. And they're here tonight, and so if, I don't know if anybody would like to say anything, but we can vacate these chairs temporarily.
I saw Mr. Altman very hard.
I just wanted to acknowledge them. I just wanted to acknowledge them because they've done an amazing job on the project. And they've spent countless hours with the staff, helping us through each of the milestones on this project and have been critical, so. Anyone? All right, we've got to take her.
I did take some notes. Ben Altman, local citizen, 29515, Southwest Serenity Way. Part of my, what I just wanted to say was kind of, for me, this has been a long time coming. I think I shared with you early on that, when I was on the Planning Commission, that I made an attempt to get a master plan in place back in the late 80s, and it, there was no energy, and I was the only one in town, other than Harold Long, who was on the design review board at the time, an architect, that had any interest in it. So it, we, you know, did some workshops and, you know, got some people talking about it, but no one was interested. So the process really was driven at that time by the property owners and developers that were, you know, property owners were working with. And they were trying to hang on to the, what was at that time, the very vague Town Center Plan, which was basically just a colored map with a lake in the middle of it. And, and so it, there was just no energy at that time. So what's happened, you know, since then is it, it was just implemented through the code in that, that general master plan, and you, up to the point where you have what you have now. The good side of that, while it was disappointing to me, the good side of that was that the community now sees what's missing, and, and is, through this process, has developed a vision of what they can see could be. And so I think you've got a really good start to, to, you know, reestablish that. And I agree with Chair Greenberg, Greenfield, that the, the key is it's going to be organizing the leadership process to deliver, to keep the vision alive, because, and Cameron Mesba also said that, they, those, that's going to be the real challenge. Because if it just gets embedded in the code, you know, as a, as an adopted plan and some code amendments, there's no energy in that. So it's going to, going to take some, some effort, and I'm excited about hearing what the commission's talking about. I would, I was planning, taking notes to do testimony at the hearing, but, so this is kind of premature, but the, the process that you're talking about in terms of priorities, I think you're right on track to create the, the Green Link, the Emerald Chain, and in, and in my mind, the, the realignment of the Park, Park Place is a, is a pretty critical element to reorient the focus of the Town Center and, and begin to establish a real Main Street connection. It's interesting, because back, I don't remember, I think it was in the 90s, there was an effort to, I think it was prior to what's there now, but the, there was an effort by Payless and, and Riede, or at that time it was Payless and Albertson's, to actually real, do a similar realignment. But again, at that time, because of the, you know, existing plan and the, and the fact that, that, I think that pavement was still curing on the Town Center Loop. It had just been built when this proposal came forward, so there was no energy to change that. But I, I always felt that it was a missing link to realign that and get us more of a north-south center Main Street going through there. So I think that's, that is an important aspect, and, and the more that can be done early on to create the image and hold on to it, the more you'll be able to deliver in the long run. So I think, think it's coming together well, and I'm, I'm real pleased with what I see so far, so.
Before you go away, can I ask you a question? I mean, you, you come here with unique perspective, right? I mean, you've been on staff, you've been on this commission, and now you're a professional in development world. Do you see anything when you look at this plan that just kind, because to some degree, right, this plan becomes a little bit of a marketing tool of sorts. You see anything in here that says, eh, you know, that might be a little bit of a disincentive or cause some concerns? You know, I, I brought up the stormwater and, you know, you know, from your perspective, and Mr. Mesba was a big help in kind of making me not worry about that a little bit, but is there anything else in there that just kind of screams at you that says, eh, this might, you know, be something that raises red flags a little bit or not?
My immediate sense is, there's nothing to me that's alarming, because I'm, I'm more in the, the long-range planning focus anyway, but, but I think the key element to me that is going to be a challenge is to work with the existing businesses.
Yeah.
To get them in, fully engaged in, in that their life isn't going to be destroyed by this plan. I, I think there, there is, they've been participating, and I've had a few conversations with people here and there about that. And there's still kind of some question about, well, how do I fit into this in the long run? And I think that's going to come up big time when you get to realigning the road.
Yeah.
Especially the ones that are facing the Loop Road and, and what, how that all comes about. But to me, that's going to be another, a key element of that whole leadership piece of how you package that. But, and, and I kind of was thinking about that too, and maybe in terms of a way to get the organizational thing started, is to identify a couple businesses that are, have an interest in that and, and would be benefit from the realignment, even in terms of a relocation of their business. And that might be the way that you get the champion that you're looking for, because if, if someone steps up and gets something out of this plan that really works for them, they're going to lead the, the rest of the path. So that might be a way to focus the attention in terms of getting started on, on the organizing part. And again, I think the Chamber's, you know, been active through this process, and I could see, at one time, there was discussion about a subcommittee of the Chamber, actually from Town Center Business people, you know, because they had the industrial sector group and,
Yeah.
and that. So I think those are all big pieces.
Thanks for the perspective.
And thanks for reminding me about the lake in the middle. I, you and I are probably the only two people that remember that. You and I are probably the only two people that remember that. That was, that was like 1990, that, that plan had the lake?
Actually, it was 1975.
Oh, it was, okay.
Or 76, where the lake was. But the interesting part is, I, because I know Mel Croker was the architect that drew that. And his idea was never to have a lake. It was a placeholder for future development. Because his idea was that as the town center grew up around the loop, that it would ultimately have density in the middle. But that wasn't clear in the plan.
No, it looked like a lake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Myers. I work for Capital Realty, and I was on the task force. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. And I recognize many of your faces of people who also served on the task force. I just wanted to commend the city for, for taking this on and coming up with a wonderful plan. Capital Realty is the company that bought this as farmland and developed it as a, the shopping center where Rite Aid was Payless, but Lambs, Thriftway, now it's Safeway, sold the land to Fries and the theater. And now we own the, the only thing we own right now is the three-story office building at the corner of Parkway and Town Center Loop. But as, we were working back in the 90s, when we started construction and before that was planning, we were dealing with a plan, as Ben mentioned, that was thought of in the 70s and 80s. And so we built for the town and demographic that was here at the time, and it has changed substantially. And this plan is looking into the future, so it's even beyond where we are today. And it's, in my opinion, a smart thing to do. Because if the city doesn't plan for the future, then you will be left receiving whatever the market, you know, is driven towards. And if you don't have something you're aspiring to, we won't get there. And so while some of this seems ahead of us, it is, we're going to be there before we know it. And I think the plan sometimes scares some business owners that are currently in the town center. Because they're thinking, are you going to demo the buildings we're in now? And is this going to be affecting us tomorrow? But really what it is, is the landowners, when they want to redevelop, this is the plan that will drive the direction in which it will go. And I think there might be some opportunity for some outside parties to come in and really do some major investment in redevelopment of the town center. And if you don't have this in place, then you will get a lesser product. So I really appreciate all the hard work that your staff has done and that all the citizens have done in their, putting, volunteering their time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. You mentioned that without a vision, that developers from outside would come and you would get whatever you would get. Is it also true that with a thought-through visionary kind of a plan for the future, that you attract the kind of developer investor who's trying to develop in that higher kind of a product?
Right.
As opposed to the run-of-the-mill? Is this more attractive to investors of that?
I think adopting a plan like this, and then the city actually pursuing high-end investors that have the money and the willingness to really invest significant dollars to create a sense of place, like we heard about in, in our panel. So there's examples like Bridgeport. It wouldn't be like this, but something different. But that kind of, you know, visioning, trying to create a sense of place could be done here. And it would probably take the city going after that kind of a high-end partner that is willing to take that on. But I would caution the city from doing that until you have some of this planning tool in place as a bigger picture. And so you'd have a more coordinated effort. That's just my opinion.
As I was listening to you, I was reminded of my favorite advertisement. BMW, for a while, had this ad on TV that said, "We had difficulty predicting the future, so we decided to create it."
There we go.
And I think the city needs to do that, because otherwise, the future is going to be, whatever happens, and it's potluck. As opposed to, you know, having, having a preference for what you would like to see there.
Yes, I concur. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we can proceed then.
Thank you, everyone. I've had the best people to work with on this project, and I feel utterly grateful. So we will shift now from focusing on the plan itself, the full document, to diving down deep into the weeds. And we'll apologize now that some of this is very detailed, and we're going to be giving you some, a chart to work with. We're going to have to walk you through. But as you'll recall, two months ago, when we started this conversation, there was a lot to talk about in regards to just the, what seemed to be two fairly simple issues. So I'm going to go ahead and let Molly present this, but we'll probably all end up tag-teaming to help you guys get through these two items.
Okay, so we provided updated code, and there are these two sort of outstanding questions. One about, and probably the more complex one, about the maximum building floor plate. You know, the question of, should we allow more square footage for an anchor tenant? So right now, what the proposed code allows for is up to 30,000 square feet per use, except in the commercial mixed-use sub-district, you know, adjacent to I-5, where the limitation is 30,000 square feet by floor. So not specific to the use, but a use could go up, you know, on two floors, for example. So just to kind of run through, to get us thinking about this and what this can look like, I'm going to run through a few examples. So Crate &amp; Barrel in Bridgeport, for example, is 20,000 square feet per floor. It's two floors. So that's, you know, the one use, the one store spanning over the two floors, but with that, that, you know, under 30,000 square foot floor plate. Container Store, also well under the 30,000. Safeway, this is looking at sort of that bigger footprint. So, you know, this would, if, if we wanted to allow for something like this here, we would need to change what the proposed code is right now. Whole Foods, this is two examples of two different Whole Foods. So you have sort of the larger 37, about 37,000 square foot on Schlesser Ferry, and then the smaller, the under 30,000, 25,000 square feet on East Burnside in Portland. And that's just one story. New Seasons, a couple more examples of kind of a, the under the 30 and the over 30. On North Williams, you have under 30. And in Northwest Portland, like, brand new, I think one of the newest New Seasons is a single-story, 37,000-square-foot building. So this is the lovely chart to which Miranda was just referring. That lays out some options. So in option one, we have what the proposed code currently includes, which I summarized on the first slide. So option two is just a slight variation of that, to allow for a little more flexibility for a larger user. So here, we're looking at, Main Street stays the same. You know, we really want the sort of smaller uses on Main Street as is envisioned. But then in every other sub-district, mixed-use, neighborhood mixed-use, commercial mixed-use, we're allowing for that 30,000 square foot per floor, so that uses can span multiple floors. Option three, a little more flexibility here, and it introduces that 50,000-square-foot floor plate. So this would put the option for 50,000 square foot, square foot floor plate in mixed-use and the commercial mixed-use. So this also brings up the question about single-story. Because it is likely that a, I mean, almost certain that a 50,000-square-foot building would be developed as a single-story building. Which right now, we are not allowing for single-stories, right? We're having a minimum of two stories in buildings in town center. So this is a consideration. Option X. This provides the most flexibility and allows for a waiver process. So that a waiver process could exceed the maximum square footage. It could also allow for the different, you know, floors, single floor, single story, sorry.
So one of the things we, in terms of giving you these numbers, why we looked at the potential increase up to 50,000 square feet, whether that's per floor or single-story, is we actually went and looked at what the different industries are doing. We looked at the different types of uses that might locate in town center that we might be interested in. And so based on your discussion, thinking about things like grocery stores or smaller, like, local gyms or different types of food, beverage, most of those actually fell under 30,000 square feet. It really wasn't until you got into kind of the grocery store category or some of the gym uses that you got larger than 30,000 square foot. And we scanned through a number of the different types of uses that we thought would come into the town center, into a Main Street. And most of those that did exceed 30,000 square feet were around, were in the 40s, maybe up to 50. I mean, most of them were not exceeding that amount anyway, unless it was a really large user, like a Sam's Club or a Costco, which isn't what we're calling for in town center anyway. So we, in terms of looking at those, we thought one option is to still maintain it at the 30. That allows most of the stuff, which is why you see some options presented to you. Option two allows more, does allow for the more flexibility for larger users, but it maintains the multi-story building. If you are looking at some of those 40, 50,000 square foot for a grocery, for a Whole Foods, for a Safeway, we still have the really high-scale design standards that we're calling for. And so the question is, is if you're wanting to go up to that 50, then I think we do just need to ask the question, should single-story buildings be allowed? Where you allow that? Or do you still want to maintain the two-story? So that's really kind of, if I have to boil it down, that's what it boils down to. That's still a complicated discussion that you all get to have now.
Can I, can I ask a question? As you were looking at these different square footages and uses, were you looking at the gravitational area that they are serving? In other words, a 50,000-square-foot, whatever that you were looking at, is that serving Portland? Or a 25,000-person city, maybe up to 40,000-person city?
So the examples that we went through in the presentation are obviously specific to locations in the Portland metro region. And we can talk a little bit about the neighborhoods that those are in and kind of the, what, who they're serving. In terms of looking at the floor plate to look at around 50,000 square feet, we were really looking at national trends. But in those national trends, they do talk a lot about, for example, they'll give a very broad range for Target, for example. But they'll talk about some of the, the urban stores, the Target stores that are now going in that are more the niche Targets, and the sizes of those that are going in. And that those are actually the higher percentage of stores, and they're only locating a few of the superstores still. But it didn't, didn't go down to as fine of a detail to say exactly where each of those stores is going and the population that they're serving. But we did look at a very broad range of, and it did provide information about the different types of stores that even a single business is putting out there. So it can, there's a lot of variation, even within a single builder, like a Target or a Whole Foods. And they talk about kind of that range of what they're providing.
Well, that goes into the more detailed kind of analysis of the market. The urban Target?
Right.
Or neighborhood Target, as we call it, is really for neighborhoods that are, for the most part, more populous than Wilsonville. The other question, though, is, would a Target want to locate as an anchor in Wilsonville and only serve Wilsonville? My guess is no. They probably are looking at a larger region for their draw. And one of the things that we were discussing, and a lot of the community discussions we're bringing up, is the town center, we're trying to make it more of a local town center as opposed to people coming here from Portland to shop. So it makes a big difference in what kind of market share you're encouraging by the floor area, even if you're going for an anchor. To me, an anchor, by definition almost, means you're going for a regional retailer. Wilsonville doesn't need, is that big enough to have an anchor for Wilsonville alone? So, you know, I, I think we need to kind of keep that in mind as we think about, what is it we're trying to attract here?
I agree, we're on the periphery of the urban growth boundary. It's not going to develop a large clientele over the other side of the river. What's on this side, and a few miles up the road, we've got Bridgeport Village.
Although we're talking about 20, 30 years, so who knows what happens?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know how much I agree with that. I mean, we get south of the river coming to Costco and Target with a large degree of frequency. And Fries comes from 50 miles around, so.
Camper's World.
Yeah, exactly, that's right. And it's not necessarily a bad thing. I think the, the bad element to that, in my mind, is it creates a parking necessity that we don't necessarily want for this neighborhood. But we want kind of the, I hate to use the word tourism for it, but, you know, Fries brings a lot of people to this area then who, who patronize other businesses in the region, for instance. And, you know, you can say that about other things, too. So I don't want to shut that out. I mean, I, I, I agree with you. I think the biggest concern that I've had consistently is, is that, you know, this is, this is a city that already supports, and it maybe is already underserved in the grocery type of area, and they do still need a footprint. It's encouraging to see, you know, kind of 30,000, maybe around the sweet spot. You know, I don't know the answer to that, but, but you're going to have to have something like that. But we, we're going to be taking away a regional draw. And maybe that's what we want, maybe that's okay. If, if Fries is not going to be here someday. I mean, we're looking at a plan that doesn't have that large of a footprint in the future. I don't know if that's good or that's bad. I mean, I tend to be business-oriented, and so I worry about that a little bit. Because I think you do still want to draw people in. Because those local, you know, that mom-and-pop, you know, clothing store, for instance, that's on Main Street, they still need people to come from places other than Wilsonville in order to survive. And if you don't have something that draws them there, is it going to work? I don't know the answer to that, that's not my, my wheelhouse. I just, you know, logically, I worry that that's going to work. I don't know what the answer to that is. I think that's why I've consistently said that, and we use the, maybe I'm using the word anchor a little too loosely, because I think you're right. I think we think of regional type of, you know, national chain kind of thing. But I've been more concerned all along about, I think you still need a grocery type of, especially if we're going to put more housing in there. We're going to need that. But you can still make that as a way for a draw, for people to come and patronize those other businesses, so that they can survive.
Is that phased as well? In other words, do you see that kind of a draw early on, when not much else is happening, and then it, the space takes a life of its own?
I, you know, I don't know the answer to that, other than to say, again, that I just worry that if you, if you don't have something that's drawing traffic, the mom-and-pop business that we really envision for a Main Street can't survive. And I don't know how to do that. I mean, you're right, it's kind of that chicken-and-the-egg thing that Commissioner Heffler has been talking about for a little bit, right? As in, you know, do you have something that draws people? You, you want to have the small business, small locally-owned business kind of thing, but if you don't have something that draws people there so that they can survive, are you really, you're shooting yourself in the foot. I don't know the answer to that, it's really hard to figure that out.
So I do think it's, it's useful to think about, I think back to the conversation that we had when Mr. Gibbs was here, and we talked about a split between local, regional, and national-type industries and chains. And so I do want to reiterate that we did look at a number of national chains. So I think there's, there's two things that play here. One is, is those different kind of levels of retail, right? You might have a national chain. A lot of them are providing uses- A lot of them are providing uses and things that we would see come into Town Center at well below 30,000 square feet as a user. And so we could still achieve a national, regional, and local.
Absolutely.
Kind of retail experience. And then I think there's the flip side of that, which has to do a little bit more with the form and with the building form and what you want to go, you want to see go in there. I do think that a multi-story grocery store is probably the most, is the one that stands out. That is probably less achievable in a market like Wilsonville, at least within the 10- to 20-year timeframe. But we do have a grocery store located in Town Center now, in a building footprint that's unlikely to probably change in our 0- to 10, 15-year timeframe. So I guess part of the question we would have is, do we think, when they might change, that a multi-story building is feasible for that type of use? Or do we want, or do we want to allow a little bit bigger? We're seeing a lot of the grocery stores go under 30,000, particularly with a Whole Foods, or under 40,000. So, you know, do we want to elevate that number to allow that specific type of user to be able to come in and do what they can, if that is more feasible for them? So I think, just a couple more things to think about.
So as if this wasn't complicated enough. I'm wondering if you went with 30,000, which, you know, is the sweet spot, as was mentioned, whether or not you're creating a situation where Fries is going to be a prize? Because Walmart could move in there if Fries went out of business without having any problem, and they're already way beyond that.
Why do you want to redevelop it, right?
Oh, yeah. Would that take away, become an incentive for not redeveloping that old property?
Solid point.
Like I said, I hate to add more complexity.
Well, I'm just thinking through the process, and whether or not it would trigger, whether it would really be allowed to go in.
Why wouldn't it be?
But I think, I think your point is, is that you're essentially giving somebody a position of, you've got a grandfathered 100,000-square-foot building. It may never go away, simply because nobody else can build that now.
It's like having the three, one of the three drive-throughs in Town Center. It may become a commodity more than a problem.
Like commodities for drive-throughs in Portland are right now. That's absolutely right.
Now, the problem I have with that, of course, is that we shouldn't be held hostage for what's there. You know, I don't know what avenues are available.
Wouldn't the solution, then, to that be the, I don't know why I got an X, but option X? It's very daunting to call it option X, but.
I guess it's because it wasn't linear to four. You could potentially add this to any of them.
All right.
My only problem with option X is that it ends up, yeah, it ends up being an invitation to challenging the standards for whatever reason. And it depends on who's sitting on the development board. And whether or not, maybe even a different set of planning staff thinks, you know, this is do it or die, because, you know, we need development. And every now and then, we hit these recessions, where any kind of harebrained idea of development becomes prized, because no development is happening all of a sudden. And I've been through that in my past life. So I know how that goes. And it's just very dispiriting for all of the vision that you may have had. So that's the problem with option X, as far as I'm.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right.
But I was under the impression that no matter what we do, there's going to be a potential of getting a waiver.
There always is.
Yeah.
Always has been.
What's the difference between, is it just a harder test to pass? I'm fine with a harder test to pass.
I just personally, I think it's important to still have something in there that tells everybody it's a possibility. And the reason being is, is because, like I said, we want, we want something that mom-and-pop businesses can operate and thrive. And if you're telling them that something like this is not a possibility, it scares me away. If I don't have that traffic coming, do I want to invest in that small business I want to put on Main Street? And so I think it's important to let people know that this is a viable option. But I'm just, but I'm like you, I'm terrified of leaving the door so wide open that we end up with something we don't want. And almost, like I said, I'm almost more worried about that from a parking standpoint than I am store footprint. Because you can add multiple stories, or, I can't remember who said it, it may have been Commissioner Hurley who said it, but you know, you have those ones where it's just like, you have, you have other small storefronts inside, you know, in front of the one, but you've got big, you know, space behind it. So there's multiple ways to do that. I think it's just important to let small businesses know, this is a possibility, you're not going to be on your own trying to get.
I hear your concern. When I was on the other side of the table negotiating these kinds of things with developers, I would put the vision in front of them and say, you want to propose an innovative way of giving us a win on our vision, which also gives you a win for what you want? Go ahead, tell me how it's furthering our vision for Town Center, and we will go along with that. But not, you know, sitting there and saying, this is what I want, and no, it doesn't do anything for you, but I want a waiver because this is what I want. It's supposed to be good for the Town Center, whatever it is. So I don't know how you put that in your code. I just had that as an approach to problem-solving with development proposals, and it was always amicable, because it was always creative and innovative and helping all of the concerns. That's what I would hope that we would get to.
Yeah, I think that, I don't think we want to exclude innovative ideas. And so I guess I was thinking around option two, and then with some of the language from down in option X, where it says additional requirements, or, you know, in other words, leave it to them to tell us what, you know, option two is what we go, this is our, this is our code. But if you can create or, you know, something that fits in with us, you can show us something more, you know, we're not opposed to it. I don't know how you, I know that's not code language in any way, shape, or form, but I think there's ways to say that, that gets to, you know, and I think option two kind of gets more to our initial vision. You know, if we get down into three, I think we're moving away from it a little bit. And I just think of the other little tiny businesses that tried to go, make a go here. There was a little women's dress shop for a while, and there was a little handicraft kind of place. And none of them have succeeded, because they didn't have the traffic that they need. I'm assuming that's why they didn't be, because they were empty most of the time. No one was ever there. They just didn't have the people coming to them. So whereas option two kind of fits more with our vision, but then you have this caveat where, show us something, show us something, show us something different, and we're open to it, so.
Well, the way I've seen that done is, if you have indicators of success, like a Plaza, list of stuff that would make it more active, more pedestrian-friendly, more this, that, and the other thing. And then you say, you know, if you can meet three of these, then we can do a waiver to this extent. And if you do six of these, then we can do a little bit more of a waiver. But you're getting a very clear list, which are meaningful indicators of success in other areas of the vision, from that development.
And we've done some of that with the form-based code, where we said, this is what we want, but pick, you know, one of 12 things, and if you meet four or five of these, we're okay with it. So I think we already have some precedent that says we like that approach. So I think we have, it's a little different, but it's not that hugely different from it. Still saying, you're staying within what we're envisioning, but you got to give us something back.
Developing the indicators is going to be a little tricky, but.
It will, but.
We have enough material here, I think, for that.
Yeah, I think you could do it. I think it would.
So you're advocating for option Y?
No, actually, it's option two.
With?
Option two.
Adding, adding some, yeah, additional kind of language that gives the comfort that you're looking for.
Yeah.
I would favor taking a harder stand on footprint than on maximum floor space. And the reason for that is, that with a mind to the pressure of parking and traffic, going up adds considerable mass to the business space without increasing the crowding of our acreage. And I think that's very important. We want the, a small, we want to have something of a small-town feel to this Main Street, especially that area. We can have more expansive building on the periphery, but even there, it's a waste of space to have a huge footprint, together with a huge parking lot. A smaller footprint, more floor space above, parking underneath, and this is how it's done. I have in mind a chain in Japan called Handsman, which would be more sort of like our Fries, more DIY home stuff than Fries. And in our little town, it was, it was small, it was not a large footprint, but in Tokyo, it's a seven-story building with crowds on all seven floors. And in other cities in Japan that have a Handsman, there are places in between there, two, three, four-story buildings. And they're very busy. And they have a kind, they have a draw in Japan, which a specialty store like Fries has here, and I think will continue to have here, even as Fries experiences, undergoes a change in its business model, more toward online sales and pickup. That's very consistent with a multi-story building, where people can get in and see the products, get their hands on them, and decide what they want, and maybe buy them on the spot, or maybe order them. Or maybe they're just coming to pick them up from their online experience. That doesn't require a big footprint to have a large business. And I think that's what we want to try to attract.
So Chair Greenfield, do you have a preference on an option or a custom option?
Two.
Two, okay. I think from my perspective, I like the flexibility that option two gives without going too far away from the vision that we've tried to develop for the Town Center. You know, does there need to be a waiver process to allow something special to go in? I don't know. It's really tough.
But if the intent is made clear in the plan, then if the vision is there, the intent is there, then there's a basis for judging applications for exceptions that don't stray too far from the vision.
Yeah. I think the key for me is maintaining that look and feel, especially in the Main Street District. And, you know, I think the things we talked about at the last meeting of potentially limiting your, your store, your Main Street frontage, if it's a large building, to something smaller, so that you do have those smaller businesses right with the larger business, so that you're not just having a big giant block of New Seasons, and then that's it. You're losing out on a lot of that space that could be used for those smaller businesses and drawing that traffic altogether. That's my concern, and making sure that we do that in the code, so that it allows those larger uses, but doesn't take away from what we're trying to get at.
Encouraging building up rather than out.
The, including neighborhood mixed use in option two doesn't seem to fit with the definition and even the placement of what we've talked about for the neighborhood mixed-use category. So I'm leaning towards option one and a half, which would be, unfortunately, the order isn't, in this chart, isn't the way that I'd like, but to have the per-floor ability on the mixed-use and the commercial mixed-use.
Would you, would you maybe then take that same 30,000 per use on the Main Street and put that to commercial mixed-use also? Because I was kind of thinking the same thing a little bit, too. It seems a little strange to put large, larger footprints right by the neighborhoods.
Yeah, we'd, right.
You know what I'm saying? Mirror the Main Street 30,000 max per use.
Yes.
Over in the commercial mixed-use.
Yes.
Do you mean, I just want to clarify, the neighborhood mixed-use, the NMU, is the one next to the existing neighborhood? The CMU, the commercial mixed-use, is the one over by I-5? So I think what I'm hearing is 30,000 per use for MS.
Yes.
And NMU. And then 30,000 per floor for MU and CMU?
That's what I was.
That's what Simon's saying.
And I think that's what I meant to say, and I misstated it. I just looked at the last column, and my eye drew right over there.
Great.
Right, because I think actually the order, the order of districts, zones that you have presented is non-intuitive to me.
I see that now.
In this illustration, is this, this looks like a photograph. Is it of a real place?
No. It's, I mean, it's meant to represent a real place, but it's.
This is a digital construction.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of those people don't have their feet on the ground.
The base, the base is actually a Google, a street, Google Street View. So it is building off a Google Street View.
I'm going to look at it.
Okay, so.
What would you guess would be a typical floor space of the individual properties that are shown here?
I mean, we're showing mixed-use, it's Main Street. I'll look at it.
This, by the way, reminds me very much of one of Gibson's illustrations that has stuck with me all this time.
So while they're looking, I guess the one thing I would ask Simon is, you know, I'm going back and looking at the pictures of the other building sizes, and does a 30,000-square-foot building really fit in the neighborhood mixed-use? I mean, Crate and Barrel is 20,000 square foot per floor. That's a pretty big building.
Yeah, I agree. Crate and Barrel would not fit, but possibly some of these neighborhood Whole Foods-type designs would fit more of a, more of a walkable thing. Again, that's Burnside, I think, that picture, and whether Wilsonville Town Center would support that kind of facility, I couldn't say. Thank you. Yeah. Bottom right. So that's 25K.
Mr. Springall. Correct.
Is your microphone on?
My microphone's on, but I wasn't speaking into it.
Paul was getting angry with you, so.
Sorry.
You're probably not getting much more clarity from us tonight than you have before.
Yeah.
Well, I do actually feel like we are getting somewhere. I feel like there's, there's a number of you that feel comfortable with option two. I have heard the thought that maybe in the neighborhood mixed-use, because there we are looking for things that are a little bit quieter, not quite as active, maybe that's not the more appropriate place to expand the per-floor, but maybe that maintains per-use. I'm not sure how that holds true for the folks who initially expressed interest in two.
So we're, I guess, to congeal that, right? We're talking about, Main Street would have 30,000 per use, as would neighborhood mixed-use, and then 30K per floor for mixed-use and the commercial mixed-use.
Correct. And then what I'm also hearing, what I've heard from, I think, half the commission, is an openness to having there also be something that says in the mixed-use and in the commercial mixed-use, that there's the potential to exceed that 30,000 square feet per floor in terms, if there's additional criteria that are met, and that we would need to draw some indicators of success for that, that are in line with the Town Center vision and the goals associated with the vision. And that what we would probably do is have a menu-based approach, where we would have half a dozen items or so, and folks need to hit a certain number of them in order to be granted a waiver.
And I would imagine architectural. And I would imagine architectural detail would be a major part.
Okay. And we do already have a lot of design guidelines. So if you'll recall back to the Development Code and the design guidelines, I mean, we are already requiring frontage requirements and setback requirements and pedestrian orientation and articulation. So there's a lot already in place, and this would allow extra community benefits in a building if it were to be granted a waiver to exceed that.
I was thinking functional, in addition to the aesthetic, not that aesthetic is not functional, but in addition to the aesthetics that we have, really function, functional spaces, public spaces, public services that are provided, and that, that are adding to the success of Town Center.
But isn't also a big piece of it, too, what you're presenting on the street? That it not be a large swath, like, you know, Commissioner Heberline said, we don't want a full block worth of something.
But you could have a large supermarket with a coffee shop in the corner, accessible separately.
Exactly. Small storefront for that particular store, but plug a couple of things around it, flanking it, and you can.
Right. Or even a public meeting space or performance space or something.
Outdoor seating.
Yeah, outdoor seating that, that kind of adds something that you want to go to. And, yeah.
And you know, that small store at the corner of the grocery, big grocery store could be just, you hang a Starbucks thing on it, and you're done. So, I mean, you know, you need to make it substantive, for God's sake.
There's going to be a Starbucks on each side of the entrance, you realize that, right?
I hate to throw another question in the mix, but if you do allow it to exceed the square footage, is there a maximum you want to put in place? So, I mean, if you're at 30,000, is there, do you feel like there's a maximum there that you still want to maintain, though?
If I were going to pluck a number, it would be 40.
Well, that's interesting that you would say that, because I looked at 50, and 50 was completely out of scale when I thought about it for Town Center and a walkable kind of a down-center area and so forth. And I thought, that's just way too big. So I know what I don't, you know, the, the top end, that, that doesn't work for me, but, you know, 40 is less than that, so.
I would prefer not to put a number there.
Yeah.
And stay with the general guideline, that it must be consistent with the concept of the area.
Yeah, it needs to be no larger than any building that's already there. But that, that, that thing, if we've got fries, that's.
Clear and definite, what, what's the term? Clear and?
Objective?
Objective.
Clear and objective criteria, and we don't have clear and objective criteria, we lay ourselves open to problems.
It's just nice to know whether there's, even if it's a range or a percentage range, whether staff and DRB are supposed to consider something that's twice that size with a 60,000 or an 80,000, if we don't put any benchmark or parameter, anything could be proposed. And so that's the only reason why I wanted to kind of ask the question, to make sure there's some level of guidance.
Don't you think that the analysis would clearly show that that is blowing all kinds of standards for Town Center if that was proposed?
Probably.
Well, but I guess.
Would it maybe make more sense to, to attach it to the block that you're on in a certain coverage amount or something like that instead?
Well, what I was going to say is, so for folks' reference, Portland, all blocks in Portland are 200 by 200, it's a 40,000 square foot block. Thusly also known for its walkability. So, but if you were to envision the old Meyer and Frank building downtown, that's a very large, I mean, that's one of the few that, in today's day and age, actually still takes up at least all four corners of the block. That is a massive piece of property, if you think about it. So if you were to take that block and plop it, or just all of Pioneer Courthouse Square, and plop, and plop it in down here in little old Piddly Wilsonville, vastly out of scale. So.
I guess the only thing I would say is, is if you do it on its own, I would agree that that is vastly out of scale. But if you have, if you have it set up right, so that you are, are making it so that it is more than just a box, where you've got an entrance on one street, you've got an entrance on another street, but you've got a multitude of things happening in between, you can get to that scale, you can get to that square footage without having to make it look like it. There's, there's things that can be done, and so I don't, I don't necessarily want to stifle the creativity of people that are trying to make money, that could actually make a use of the, of the space. You know, you could, you could take Fries and completely reimagine what that is into something amazing that's not just a box. That's bigger than, than 30,000, that's, so I just, I struggle with, with saying, okay, it's, it's absolutely too big, 50,000 is too big.
Well, so here's the question, though. Based on our proposed street layout, what is the largest lot?
We did, they're 250.
Or block, I should say.
That's a very good point.
They're 250 feet. I thought we had 250 feet block standards.
So, that right there gives you your number.
Yeah, it can't be any bigger than a block.
Yeah. Unless we're starting to start, well, yeah, yeah, exactly. You just, it's not going to be any larger than where the four sides of the lot are of streets. So, I mean, granted, we could have somebody who buys something, you know, right now that is much, much larger, but if it's within the confines of the street system that we put forward, what is that size? And then that, that could be the answer right there.
Well, unless, unless they, unless they want to build something that actually spans two blocks with a bridge across it, like.
But then it'd be separate, but it's still separate buildings.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got that with Pioneer Courthouse Square, or not Pioneer, but Pioneer Place. But you don't, but you've got different massing, you've got obviously different buildings, you've got a street through it, et cetera, et cetera, so. And, and no one business encompasses those two. It's now, it's a mall.
So I, what I'm hearing from the Planning Commission, and I may not be hearing it right, so I'm looking for head nods one way or the other, is the Option 1.5, as proposed by Simon, or Commissioner Springall, excuse me, and with Option X for the mixed use and commercial mixed use areas. No maximum stated.
No.
Did I lose you, Commissioner?
Where did, where did we get to Option X when we were talking about 30,000 per floor?
So I heard, so I heard Option 2 as the primary driver here, with 30,000 square feet per use for Main Street and neighborhood mixed use, and 30,000 square feet per floor for mixed use and commercial mixed use. However, allowing a waiver process to exceed in the mixed use and commercial mixed use process, and with that, we would write down a menu-based approach for indicators of success. And there wouldn't be a maximum square footage associated with that, but they would have to prove that they are meeting the intent of the vision and achieve some of those performance standards.
Do we really want that? You know, I was reflecting on Commissioner Heberline's statement that if somebody thinks they're going to make, be able to make money, let them, well, we have a lot of malls that are sitting there empty. Somebody thought they were making money at one point, and now it's the city's problem. So, no, I don't want that, I don't think. I, I want an analysis that says this is viable, not just because this person thinks they're going to make money on it, but it's good for the city and Town Center. So, so long as we're okay there, yeah, I'm okay with not having a maximum size, given the fact that we already found that there is a physical maximum size because of our blocks anyway. So that gives me comfort, actually.
Well, and along with that, it would have to, you know, again, if somebody were to purchase a massive piece of property right now and then say that, but it would be, one of the caveats would be, you know, so they purchase a piece of property that, you know, could do 60,000 feet, right? But we're saying, hey, wait, hold on, timeout. One of our caveats is, eh, you're going to have to make this fit into our vision of the street plan. And thusly, your 60K isn't going to work.
Right. So that brings it, another question, sorry about that. Is there going to be official mapping of the streets? Because that would take care of that.
In terms of the final delineation of every single local street? So we have all the local streets put on the street map. They are hashed, because we, many of the parcels in this area are large parcels, and so over time, those might get broken up and redeveloped, and we want to allow some flexibility of how exactly those streets end up getting aligned.
So you're not doing official mapping?
Spacing standards. So, and they need to, the code says that they need to be consistent with that street network that's laid out, and so if somebody's proposing to modify that in some way, they need to, there needs to be reason why, and then, and there's two criteria for that, and the Development Review Board would have to approve that.
So it's kind of soft official mapping, is what you're telling me?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there is some latitude to have a space larger than the, the street size? Or, I'm trying to make sure I understand what you're saying.
You still have to meet the spacing standards.
Okay.
But they don't, the road doesn't necessarily have to go exactly how it is that we showed on the map. So we showed one version on the map based on the spacing standards.
Okay.
But you could potentially, those roads could shift one way or the other for development, but you'd still need to meet the spacing standards. We did, as part of the discussion with the commission, at one point, there was conversation about the spacing. I think that you can have a slightly larger spacing between two roads, as long as that you still maintain a pedestrian access at that 250 space interval. So you might have a street that's a ped-only street, or a ped bike street that's not a vehicular street, but you would still have that connectivity.
It all comes back to me now. You're right. This has been a long process.
But I guess I'm still confused, are, are we going to find ourselves in a situation where people are going to be able to move roads such that the fact that we don't have a maximum is going to hurt us down the road? That's, that's what I guess I'm not understanding. Because we're, we're kind of saying that a block is going to limit its size, and it's never going to get above a certain size simply because a block is, is this big, but if you shift roads a little bit, are we going to find somebody getting a 60,000 foot square footprint that we don't want?
You still have the spacing standard. It just won't necessarily be a vehicular road. So there's still a, a max spacing standard that will, to some degree, protect you.
Okay. All right, just making sure.
Yeah.
Because some lawyers are awful people, I'm just trying to. I'm just saying. Sorry, Amanda's looking, shooting me daggers right now, but she knows it's true, too.
Isn't there a code of conduct that you're supposed to not do that? You know, planners have that, you can't, land-based planners.
No, we're supposed to advocate for our clients.
So I feel confident that we've reached some type of a recommendation on this, is that correct?
What do you mean, some type?
That you have reached a recommendation on this, and that staff is going to move forward with Option 2, with the amendment for neighborhood mixed use, and describe a waiver process that will be back to you.
Move on before that changes.
So we have another really easy topic for you to discuss. At least this one doesn't come on the chart, so.
We can make one, though.
Or a table, we could probably make one. So this gets back to the drive-through question, and so we wanted to bring back to you really the options that you have around this. Hopefully, you've been thinking about this for the past two months, although not too much because the holidays were in there. But really, there's three options as we see it, but you might come up with another hybrid, which would be great. Option 1 is to prohibit drive-throughs in all districts. I mean, that's really what we heard a lot in terms of what's consistent with the vision. This would mean that existing drive-throughs become a non-conforming use. The second kind of approach would be to permit the existing drive-throughs to be continued, and that would also allow them to be rebuilt in that commercial mixed use zone, if, as long as they're meeting the new design standards that are consistent with the Town Center vision. This would not allow any new drive-throughs, essentially, and this is what we've proposed in the code, because we wanted to recognize that there are some drive-throughs. Do we create too much inherent value in them if we don't even allow them to be redeveloped? And we're saying, as long as you redevelop them in a very well-designed way, you can. So that's where we landed with the code, and that was what was proposed to you two months ago that you discussed. There's some question about whether that's where we wanted to land or not, and so what we've put up there is Option 3, which would be essentially allowing Option 2, and in addition to that, you would permit new drive-throughs, because that was the question, do we permit new drive-throughs? And staff went back and looked and said, okay, so if we permit new drive-throughs, where would that be? And really, the discussion that was had with the Planning Commission, and that staff believes the best location for that would be in that mixed use area, that there's a lot of reason not to locate that in the neighborhood mixed use area, and not on the Main Street, we heard that loud and clear. So that would really put new ones in the mixed use district. That would allow the number of overall drive-throughs to increase, and we're not certain whether or not that meets the project vision. Many of those could end up, the mixed use area is located along Wilsonville Road, and I think there's some concern about what we're trying to do to make Wilsonville Road more approachable to bikes and pedestrians, and increase that connectivity north and south of Wilsonville Road for those folks. And so it's really a question for you all to discuss and make a determination on which of those approaches you think is the best fit.
I agree that we left this kind of fuzzy in November, but I went, my, before I did, I, my impression was, my, pulling from my memory, that Option 2 is mostly where I thought we were coming down. And I went back and reread the minutes from November, and it, even from the minutes, it seems to me that that's where we were pretty much settling, even if it wasn't definite. And I also recall, I don't remember whether this is reflected in the minutes or not, that we, at least some of us had a, a sense that it was, that the drive-throughs were more appropriate on the Loop segments than they were on Wilsonville Road, or within the interior of Town Center.
In fact, I thought we said it was just the two MU districts along Wilsonville Road. In fact, not even this back one on the north MU area, was what we were saying, I thought.
I think it was just the front two.
Right, and so I think.
No, I, so, I've actually been thinking about this a lot, because I'm dealing with the new drive-through standards in the city of Portland right now. And what you're seeing in Portland is exactly what we were talking about before, which is, is that the minute you, you put so much constriction on it, you're just taking those grandfather drive-throughs, and they will never go away. I, I mean, I promise you that. That's, that's exactly the market that's being created in Portland right now, as in if you've got an existing drive-through, it's gold, because you can't get a new one. And so there's actually a danger that if we're so restrictive with it, you're, you're just going to be keeping them where they are without, and which may be an impediment to what we want to develop in its entirety here. That's why I'm a big advocate of, I think you still need the option to do them in any manner in the mixed use, and this, that's why I said last time, I'm comfortable saying in the mixed use, uncomfortable saying in the mixed use, simply because I think that northern quadrant of mixed use, on the right-hand side there, it doesn't make sense there from a traffic standpoint. It really made sense to me along the two mixed use portions along Wilsonville Road. But I think you can still do a little bit of what Portland is doing, which is, is that, and maybe we have this to some degree, which is, is, you know, there's, there's queuing standards, you, you must have, you know, you cannot queue outside of the, outside of the actual drive-through lane and the, you know, you have to have, it's, it's, it's getting complicated in Portland, to be honest with you. You know, maybe we can change our standards a little bit so that we can make sure that it's not getting so traffic problematic, considering we want this to be walkable and bikable, but I have a sincere concern that if we say you cannot, if, if we're going to go with something like Option 1 or 2, you're just ensuring that the ones that are there now are going to stay there forever.
What about the idea of Option 3, but limiting the quantity of drive-throughs to some given amount and a, or a given spacing, so that you still allow it, but you're not allowing seven of them in a row?
So I'm going to expand on that for what I was thinking about. So a couple of things. First of all, I'm a bigger abstract to it, and you'll understand my point in a second. Would we include car washes and bank drive-throughs as part of drive-throughs? Now, after we decide to answer that question, what about the idea of, so that you don't necessarily have an exact tax lot that becomes a piece of gold by allowing them to stay there? there? What if we were to allow for transferable rights? Which then, if you looked at it from the perspective of, and help me if I'm not doing my thinking correctly, I've got Wells Fargo, the car wash, Taco Bell, Wendy's and McDonald's are the, are our drive-throughs. If you include those other non-food...
Did you say Starbucks?
Starbucks.
Starbucks?
Starbucks, thank you.
I think there's two banks, did you catch both banks?
Are they drive-throughs? And, and help me out.
B of A and Chase.
Okay, so that's two more, okay, so...
There's no Wells Fargo.
So, yeah, it's on the other side.
Other side, okay.
What about the post office?
So, okay.
The post office has a drive-through, we're...
That's, that's what, I wasn't sure if that was included as a drive-through or not.
Is there federal property, I'm going to say that, you know, so, we can parse that out, but okay, so we're somewhere in the neighborhood of six. To facilitate the, the idea of the vision, so let's just say down the road, even though they just, just for argument's sake, you know, even though just McDonald's just renovated, but they say, hey, when the, when the streets move around and we don't like that and that's not easy for our customers, but we want to go over to where currently Chase is, it just works better. I'm just making all this up. Or, you know, they want to go where, I don't know, something else is that doesn't have a drive-through right now. What if we say that, okay, all the existing ones get a grandfathered-in drive-through right? It does create for a transferable piece, but I, I don't know how it all works out, but you see what I'm talking about. So we say six drive-throughs in town center. If you want to go across the street or you want to go across I-5, that's fine, but we're going to allow for six drive-throughs because that's what we currently have, or if we reduce the number and say, so anyway, you see where I'm going with it, I don't know whether any of those variations and permutations would be of interest to anybody.
Actually, that idea would result in the existing drive-throughs transferring into a higher use, so to speak. So if you have a high, have a drive-through that's really, you know, not essential, some high kind of, higher use could, could buy that, so to speak, and build it.
Match it out.
Yeah. The, the tension here is, the idea of drive-throughs creates a car-dependent kind of characteristic to the, to the whole town center and we're trying to make it pedestrian-friendly and drive-throughs also create hazard for these bike trails and all kinds of other stuff because there's impact there. So there's a tension there. Is it okay to live with the six that are there? I, I guess I could live with it. When I think about the fact that these are going to become gold, so to speak, and never go away, so that at least allows you to move them around to where they're more logically to be located, if they're not going to go away anyway, might as well be flexible with where you locate them. Now, the other issue is, to me, drive-throughs, other than the, the traffic impact that they have and the car dependency, can be a part of a redeveloped area, even in downtown pedestrian areas. The bank that I banked at in Madison had a drive-through which was under their building where the parking lot was, they also had this aisle where there was a window, you, you got your stuff and drove through, it was just for one car at a time, it was a single kind of coffee shop kind of a drive-through.
Lake Oswego has that in the bank that's in that parking lot.
So, and then I thought, well, that was an old thing, but then a brand-new residential and mixed-use building was done a couple of blocks from the, from the Capitol and that had a big coffee shop on the first floor as part of, part of its mixed-use and behind the coffee shop on that floor was parking again. The coffee shop had a drive-through there and you couldn't tell there was a drive-through, although when you pulled out, it had an impact, but you were pulling out the same place as the parking was pulling out. So it wasn't an additional kind of point of impact with bike and pedestrian paths.
And it's underground so it doesn't affect the ambiance of the place.
Yeah. In one case, it was next to a pedestrian, semi-pedestrian, buses were on it, but State Street is pedestrian and the other one is not, is actually a major thoroughway and so it, it, it is probably in character with that. So there's, there are ways of doing it as part of a redevelopment that doesn't have the, the impact. I don't know how to get there in, in, as part of your code and design standard.
There's a dissonance between the kind of pedestrian, walkable neighborhood kind of thing that we're talking about in Main Street here, or I should get rid of that language, Main Street, because we have a Main Street in Wilsonville and it's not what we're talking about in Park Place. So let's, let's say Park Place. That, that has a particular ambiance, it's pedestrian, it's street-oriented, it's street surface-oriented and caters, we hope, toward lingering and, and meeting up and that sort of, of activity. And that's quite different from a drive, the idea of a drive-through, what you can do with a drive-through, there are completely different kinds of activity and different ambience involved. I think that we want to encourage the Park Place ambiance more and let anything else happen in the periphery, if it has to happen within our study area at all, it should happen on the periphery of it. And maybe some people are going to get their coffee fill-up or their gas fill-up or whatever they get on the, in the drive-through on their way to or from having lingered in town center, but we don't want to cater to that in town center. But having said that, I'm also mindful of what I, I'm seeing as a really radical change in the business model going on now, toward online and online plus pickup, which requires, which would be facilitated with a, a drive-through possibility. I, I order something, it fries, it'll be ready for me in a half hour, I drive through and pick it up, open the window, get it and, and then I'm out of there. And, and that's even extending now to grocery stores. Safeway is making a big thing of its, of its online shopping and now Freddy's is into it. I think they're all going that direction. When I'm no longer able to get out so easily in the daytime, I can imagine that my wife and I would take advantage of, of this sort of thing, when it's harder for us to push a cart through the store. Hopefully that's a few years away from, from us, but anyway, that, that is the direction it's going. This is a busy, hurry-up society and what we're talking about with Park Place is kind of flying in the face of that, we're trying to slow down that, that speed and for people to linger and enjoy being together and being somewhere. So I'm, I'm really torn about this drive-through business.
But I don't think anybody's advocating any drive-through on Main Street at all.
Main Street District, yeah.
Excuse me, the Main Street District.
But the interior here.
Yeah.
Right. No, we're not, I, I think everybody is agreed that it's on that loop, the way, the east...
The mixed-use.
The mixed-use, out on the edges.
So where I think I hear the group right now, and it can, that can continue and evolve, but what I've heard is the, essentially looking at the number of drive-throughs that we currently have in town center and going essentially with option two but allowing that to be a transferable right, so it's not necessarily on that specific tax lot and that there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be allowed to exceed the number that we currently have today. Not sure if, I guess I would look to legal advice on whether that's allowable by law, but, and then if it is, that's what we're proposing and that it would be allowed within the mixed-use district area that is north of Wilsonville Road but south of Courtside and the Courtside extension.
Say that last part again.
It'd be in the mixed-use district areas that are north of Wilsonville Road and south of Courtside Drive and its extension.
I guess I would, I would pose the question to the commission for whether or not this should be for the entire mixed-use. As a homeowner on the north side of town, I would personally not have an issue if I so chose to patronize a drive-through, which I don't. Having a mixed, having a drive-through in that northern mixed-use area, what's the difference fundamentally? I mean, the town center Loop East is a collector road. Your Parkway Avenue and Canyon Creek Road are minor arterials. You've got major traffic areas in that, in that location. Why wouldn't we allow a drive-through in that area as well?
I, I would concur with that and then kind of jumping off from the idea of, you know, something that we're not currently doing, but well, actually, I mean, there, there are plenty of other kinds of businesses that aren't just a drive-through food, drive-through. I mean, we even had Albertsons that used to do drive-through for their, for their pharmacy, you know, et cetera, so all those kind of things, you know, that it's not necessarily that, or if you, you know, reinvent it where you got half of it facing your pedestrian mall area, but on the backside you can still do a drive-through. And I don't think drive-throughs are going to go away in any way, shape or form in the foreseeable, at least millennium.
I guess my question to staff would be...
So I would say, I would concur with moving into the, all of the MU, at least on the periphery of it.
And, and one question I did have is how many permitted drive-throughs do we have in the town center area? I mean, because I'm assuming is, is the goodwill drop-off considered a drive-through?
Yeah.
And, and so I guess, well, I would like to have that inventory of what is really considered a drive-through before we decide how many is acceptable. You know, if, if we've got 13 of them, and I can't think of 13, but, you know, I just don't know what that number is, and so if we think we're at seven or eight, well, maybe 10 is the right answer.
You know what might be a better way to go about it instead of a quasi-arbitrary number, that it's based on spacing?
I'd be okay with that.
X number of linear feet, footage, distance, if we're saying the MU on the periphery.
So, so the, the periphery along Town Center Loop East is uncomfortable for me because it's, it's adjacent or even included in the, in the neighborhood mixed-use area as well. It's that hatched area along the road from Canyon Creek Road and Town Center Loop East. So, so I'm, I'm not sure about the periphery idea, I mean, yes, you want to get vehicles away from the pedestrian center and yes, this is a collector, but there's also people that live on, potentially on this street or very close to it.
Does that just mean, Simon, that we shouldn't allow them to enter and exit the drive-through from Town Center Loop East proper, but from a interior circulation road? Does that solve the issue that you're...
But that, this starts to create a conflict with the pedestrian type of environment you're trying to build on the interior.
Fair. Yeah, but it's that, it's that trade-off of, there's going to be pedestrians everywhere and I'll put that in air quotes.
Right.
So you have to allow it somewhere, where do you allow it? I guess you don't have to allow it somewhere, we could go with option one, but that doesn't sound like what we're...
And with some of the kinds of drive-throughs that we've identified, not every drive-through is a 24-hour fast food chain, you know, we'd have to decide how do we want to define those. And just another piece for legal to figure out in her, in her spare time, is if, if you're giving credits, if you will, for it being a drive-through, so again, using my prior example, so McDonald's decides that that location isn't what they want to do, a developer comes in and says, that piece of land is going to be better served with whatever thing that is not a drive-through. And so, A, how do you get that transferability going along when it's, when it's not by the same developer? So I'm the developer, I own the McDonald's property and I own another piece over here. Okay, great, I could get credit as, for my two pieces of property I want to develop at the same time. But if all I own is the McDonald's piece and say, hey, I want to boot McDonald's out and I want to build something different there, how does that credit then move over to Eric when he's developing a different piece of property over here? That's the really confusing piece to it.
Is there a market for these?
Right, I mean, you're, you're starting, yeah, I mean, yes, there is a market for it, but how does that go about?
You're actually creating one.
Yeah, you've just, you've just created one, so anyway.
So what's happening in Portland right now?
Yeah. And then also do you, if somebody decides to, if I decide to get rid of the McDonald's, do I all of a sudden then get some sort of credit for, in my development? So instead of being limited to two stories or three stories, do I now get to go to four or five? Glad I could make everybody have a fun day and I'm out, I'm out of here.
It's really complicated, but we're also, we're also in danger of, of limiting the possibility of what Chair Greenfield said, which is, is, you know, if, if, if the future might entail more online type of purchase with onsite pickup, you know, you may be getting in the way of that, but I'm just making it worse.
Well, the, the question that that raises also is, in full development of town center, whether or not you want to drive there just to go through a drive-through. I don't think so, it's going to be too cumbersome. So the drive-through liquor store, whatever it is, is going to be in, in the future, is going to have to be outside of that whole kind of town center area.
On high-traffic streets.
Yeah. Regardless of how much traffic there is right now, I understand the, the kind of idea that if you're driving through East Loop and going up wherever you're going to the, some of the tech campuses that we have up there, that it would be handy to go through and get your coffee and go up. Is that really what we're designing the town center for, is, I keep going back to? It can be done, I, I think if we're doing any of these drive-throughs in new development, you need to have criteria that, for example, one of them, you know, the spacing is one, the other one I think is use existing driveway. If you have a parking driveway going into the street, that should be how your drive-through exit and entrance is, is operating so you don't have an additional one somewhere. That, for example, so that you're minimizing the impact. But it's very, this is even more difficult than square footage as far as I'm concerned.
So we do have, because the proposed code has option two and we were allowing drive-throughs to be rebuilt, we do have standards for drive-through facilities in the proposed code. So that portion does exist, it's section K, it isn't in the packet this time, but it was, is your online appendix A. But it does talk about that they shall not be on Main Street in the Main Street District, all traffic queuing needs to be accommodated on-site, the drive-through lanes shall be located in an area between a building and public street, shall not be between the building and public street, that way you maintain your buildings fronting the street for the pedestrian experience. And they shall also meet the standards for the primary building access, which again would be pedestrian-oriented and they would be clearly marked to avoid conflict with pedestrian bike facilities. So we could add something about the driveway access as being the primary access point or being, also being the access point for the drive-through. And I think, I think that those standards help us in terms of getting at a lot of what you're talking about, is if something does redevelop, that it's, it's doing it in a way that's consistent with what's been envisioned here. I do think there's a struggle about this, the number and...
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable...
Or the spacing, I, I do feel like maybe the spacing is a way to help get at that so that if you do have some and if there's the potential for, we're trying to reduce the conflicts, that there aren't at least multiple per block or even multiple within a few blocks of each other, like, so I don't know what that number might be, but it could be one approach.
I'm not real comfortable with setting a hard number, I have to say. And in option two, the statement, no new drive-throughs. And in option two, the statement, no new drive-throughs is, that really ties our hands. We don't know where business is going in the next 10 into 20 years. And my guess is that there's going to be more of this, not less. And we need to be flexible enough in our code to grow with what actually develops. I didn't think so, but I am now tending more to an option three, I think.
You really want self-driving carts to go through and pick up your grocery and coming out at any, any hour of day in 10 years?
Or you push a button there.
I mean, that's the future.
It's the bots that are already delivering in a couple of cities, so.
And the drones.
It's a car.
You say drones.
Drones, drones. So if we did three with some spacing requirements, is that what you're thinking maybe is more the way we're leaning? I'm leaning that direction, but I'm not sure that's what you're saying.
I think I am leaning that way.
I mean, the spacing thing really, to me, gets to the, you know, right now, we've got drive-through, 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 and that's not very conducive to pedestrian movement. But if there's a space, you know, a reasonable spacing and you've got these kind of neat, different approaches that I just, you know, heard about, and I wouldn't want to not have those possibilities. You know, you got your, you live up above and there's a bank and then, you know...
Yeah, I think, I think it's critical that we maintain pedestrian access and pedestrian feel and still, you know, try, try as hard as we can to encourage people to actually get out of their cars. And yet, at the same time, recognize that they're not always going to do that. And, and that there will be businesses around them.
But you're talking about our project vision.
Right.
That really needs to govern and in approval process, it has to be taken account of, but not in a hard way. I run up against this clear and objective standards problem as a problem, as a real problem for a creative...
Lawyer.
No. Real problem for creative development. And I, and option three, I have a little problem with the flatness of the statement does not meet project vision, because I think that it's possible to allow a number of drive-throughs to increase meeting the project vision. The project vision shouldn't be so limited as to specifying how many drive-throughs there can be. It has to be that the drive-throughs are consistent with the overall feel of the project, the safety of the project, the intent, the ambiance, the use of this acreage. And that doesn't, that can't, it's hard to quantify easily without needlessly tying our hands.
Yes. Okay. I think I agree. We need to maintain the pedestrian feel, but we need to be, have less flexibility because we're looking at it in the future.
But she's given the objective standards that do that, at least in my mind, right? I mean, where the, where the queuing line is and the window is and where it's not and the like is what gets us there.
I think we're already moving in that direction.
I've always been in the three camp, but I can live with two, so.
I'm in the three camp.
Yeah.
Three without, with a little modification of the language there.
Three with a spacing standard.
Spacing or...
With other real...
Or other real, yeah, or other...
Or some sort of limiting factor.
Some sort of limiting or...
How is the spacing standard? Could you, somebody?
Well, I was just thinking, I mean, we've already got a spacing standard for curb cuts, right?
I believe so. I believe so. That's what we were actually just talking about, but it's not...
So that kind of ends up...
But how many curb cuts in a row for a drive-through are you going to allow? Are you going to say we could have three curb cuts on the same block, all for drive-throughs, and that's okay?
Share a curb cut.
Curb the curb cuts.
How is that going to work, though? You're going to need access for parking and so forth.
Yeah.
Some of those are going to be dual or triple use.
Could be. Yeah, I just...
I'm okay with that.
I think my biggest concern with, with any of these is, is not the drive-through not allowing or disallowing the drive-throughs, but the enforcement mechanism, making sure that the internal queuing is sufficient so you don't get spillover. I mean, I think that's where the problems come in with, with pedestrians and with bicyclists is we don't, or we don't have or we aren't enforcing the fact that it needs to be on property. And until we do that or when we do that here, I think that's where we can make sure that we allow them in a manner that's still acceptable.
I was looking for...
I mean, we look at it through the development review, but in terms of, you know, being out, we're not out at Starbucks each day enforcing that.
But I think it's, it's going to vary depending on the nature of the business.
Absolutely.
I mean, how many people actually drive through at the bank, I mean, anymore?
Have you seen it?
Versus, you know, a Starbucks fast, or if you're just, you know, you're doing your online purchase, swing by, it's already paid for, hi, I've got it, thanks, bye.
This reminds me of one of the most contentious issues. We had the DRB when Chair Greenfield was also on it. We talked about the drive-through, the new drive-through coffee at the, no, not Starbucks.
Causing me pain.
Human being, thank you. With, also, also has a drive-through restaurant there and, of course, the gas, one of the busiest gas stations in the state.
And we were concerned about cross-traffic.
Yeah. And so it's a very limited space, and they had the applicant, basically had to go over multiple times, but they, they had to do a very detailed traffic analysis of the shared...
And make some modifications.
Shared driveway, oh, with the Holiday Inn as well. So there's four businesses that share this very small, tight, tight-controlled driveway. It was intense, but they did it. So is it, is it walkable? Not really, but it's a gas station for a start.
Miranda, have you seen Portland's new standard? Have you looked at that?
For the drive-throughs?
Yeah.
I'm just aware of, probably not what's happened...
Very recently.
Very recently. I'm aware of the history behind when the, when they first adopted standards for all of their Town Centers.
Yeah.
They essentially prohibited any drive-throughs, both new or, or redeveloped. And I was aware of, for example, in the Hollywood Town Center, that that was creating a significant issue around redevelopment of a parcel. And so then, when they shifted those standards to allow drive-throughs to be redeveloped, that then they were able to see that project shift, because the bank became one of the tenants essentially of a multi-story mixed-use project, and they maintained a drive-through, but it's on the backside of the property. You can't really see it from the front side.
Yeah, and those are the standards you have, and they have something about projected queuing and the like. And so you're supposed to be projecting how many you expect in the queue so that you, your drive lane, and I, I mean, you might want to seek that out. It might have quite a few of the elements in there that we're trying to. I think you already have some of the elements there, but I think that whole queuing thing and, and where it accesses and doesn't access is kind of giving us a little bit of heartburn, and Portland has really spent a lot of time on that.
Yeah.
To the point that it is difficult for what I'm contending with, but it might be useful for what we're contending with.
Is that where you pulled it from?
So you're already well on the way with that, it seems to me.
So the last ques, it sounds like everyone is now resonating, or maybe not everyone, but there's a lot of consensus around option three. Is that shake of nod, yes, no, yes?
I think Postma's put something in the water for...
We have design standards. I think the last question's whether there's a spacing standard that you want in place as well, whether that's one per block since we have certain spacing standards on the streets or whether, I don't, I'm just throwing that out there. Or whether you've abandoned that and are just happy with three.
We need to maintain the pedestrian spacing standard. I mean, you can't have multiple, multiple driveways, multiple curb cuts in a single block. So if, if that means there's multiple drive-throughs behind, you know, sharing, sharing a shared driveway, that's what it means, and they, and they have to manage that somehow, those businesses and the applicants.
I guess I would like staff to take a look at it and see what makes sense based on the standard.
What the driveway spacing standard is and whether that makes sense. Okay. Done.
Done.
Well, we don't, we do not have another work session scheduled on this, but we don't have a hearing scheduled on it until March. Perhaps we could just get an update next month.
Sure, we can do that, because it sounds like we have clear direction on the last issue. On option three, it sounds like the driveway spacing could be the answer in addition to the design standards we have. And we'll double-check Portland to see if we've already got the queuing and access consistent in our design standards. We can provide you with an email to let you know on where that lands, and if we, if staff feels that spacing's adequate, and if so, then that's what we can propose in the code for the hearing.
I'm looking for a performance standard. When you look at all of those kind of variables, I want to make sure it's going to perform properly.
Around the queuing or...
Around the queuing, around its conflict with pedestrian and bike and all of that.
Okay.
So let's not make a long work session, but let's add a short work session to our agenda next month.
We can do that. I can also send the information by email and see if that ends up being sufficient, just because I know that you have two hearings and an informational item already. So, but if, if when we send that information, if when we send that information, there is need for conversation, we, we can put that as a brief work session.
I'm okay with email.
Okay.
That would be fantastic.
We'll try that as a first approach.
Oh, we do. We have two public hearings. Oh, dear.
So we consider what's signed and wait for me.
Well, you've already hit on our last slide. I thank you so much for your diligence tonight. You really gave us a lot of great feedback on the plan and gave us the recommendations and direction we needed on that, those last two items. I know those were kind of the big, the big pieces that we kind of left hanging out there, and we really appreciate your thoughtful conversation. I really appreciate it. So just really fast, the timeline, as Chair Greenfield just mentioned, is that we're coming back for a hearing in March here, and there will be some public review on the draft plan. As you saw before, we'll be sharing that story map version of the plan with the community, and we'll have a work session with the council for them to see the plan on February 4th.
So ideal state, the council would see whatever our, whatever the proposal is for the drive-throughs?
Yes. Our hope is that we get all of that language into the packet they receive.
Okay.
If for some reason it's not, it would definitely be called out in the presentation to say, here are the last decisions that have been made around these issues.
Great.
And one last thing. As great a guy as, as Aberline is, could we make the vice chair actually Postma on your first page?
Yes. That was...
Yeah, his unpaid position. I mean, he's losing money left and right here, based on his title.
We caught that after we sent it out. We apologize, and it is already corrected.
We've created a rivalry now.
I like the drama.
I sent an email to Miranda asking her to change it as well, just to put it into the record.
Be careful in the parking lot.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I think that concludes our work session on this.
You're welcome very much, yes.
Thank you all. Moving on, we have the report from City Council. Does anyone have questions, observations to be passed back to City Council from the action minutes?
Yeah, sorry. The, I guess the most recent City Council meeting had a lot of discussion about the wireless standard. Is that, that's coming up? Is that? Did they have to actually pass some?
Yeah, because of FCC rules changing this month.
All right.
Yeah, so January 14th is when the FCC ruling goes into effect. So on Monday, council adopted design standards and fees, and it adopted on first reading some code amendments. They will be adopting on second reading the code amendments on January 24th, and we are asking that it go into effect immediately.
Okay. Thank you.
So our work session is... What are we doing for the work session next, next month? I noticed wireless was on it.
I think that was a placeholder for what we imagined to be the second round of code revisions that we were anticipating we would need to fully comply with the regulations. However, that second step is not materializing in the timeframe that the schedule is showing. So we anticipated a whole second round of code revisions, tightening up the entire thing. We kind of took this first cut at it to just get, get it done kind of thing, and recognizing, for example, the carriers that came Monday night, they found a couple of additional things that, and they brought them up, and we were able to make those changes for second reading. But it's entirely possible through litigation, through, through additional decisions that are made, kind of going over time, that we may need to go back and do it again. So that was a placeholder. We don't see that happening right now when the schedule, as we've got it drawn up.
Right.
Good. So we have already been talking about our, our work program. Before we adjourn, I want to acknowledge that it is my understanding, though I have not seen it in print, that council has reappointed Commissioner Springall for another term.
Correct.
Correct. In line with that, next month, we are due to have an election of chair. And for that purpose, I think probably we will have a brief executive session, and we will do that at the beginning of our meeting next, next month.
Chris, what's my timeframe? I'm done this year. I may not have a full year, so you may want to consider that. Am I right about that?
End of the year, yes.
Oh, it's through the, through to the end of the year? I thought it was like, I thought I...
December. I'll double-check.
Yeah, I think, I thought it was like in October or something like that.
Well, I can surely get, I can surely get that extended.
Yeah, no, I think you and I are in the same...
Don't do anything.
Don't worry about it, Chris. I'm just saying, think about that.
Anything else for the good of the order? Then we are adjourned. My goodness, 9:06.
Thank you very much, everybody.
The information sheet we received says you guys are both through the end of...
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, I think...